Happy New Year.
Whether it opens.
You know, Ed really needs duck when he has lobster.
Oh, I thought it was Ed.
I just bought some.
Your neighbor's house?
Was it a garage?
No, it was the house.
The time is 7:02 and we'll call to order the city council meeting for December the 14th, 2015 in Council Tamers. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Keller.
Here.
Mr. D. Genova.
Here.
Mr. Rohr.
Here.
Mr. Hellinger.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Mayor Riggle.
Here.
Item two on the agenda is invocation which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Mel Carrato from Engier's House, so we will all please scan.
As you meet tonight for the business of the City of Delaware, let us open our hearts and draw from each other strength, wisdom, and loving kindness, and let that lead you, the leaders of our city, to create a future city full of peace, prosperity, and opportunity for all our citizens. Go now with empathy, understanding, and the support of those around you into your work.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and we do a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mel. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the motion summary. If the clerk please read this into the record.
Approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council held November 23rd, 2015 as recorded and transcribed.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Hellinger. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. D. Genova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Question carries. And item five is the consent agenda. If the clerk please read this into the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary for the Planning Commission meeting held November 4th, 2015. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary for the Shade Tree Commission meeting held October 27th, 2015. Item C, resolution number 15-55, a resolution authorizing the modification of certain traffic to extend the no being here to corner zone on the north side of West Harrison Street to 100 feet east of South Washington Street. Item D, resolution number 15-56, a resolution approving the sale of a street department 2005 International Single-Axle Dump Truck and a Parks and Natural Resources Department 2000 Chevy Pickup Truck with cloud blade that have outgrown their useful serviceable life. Item E, established January 11th, 2015 at 7:30 PM as the date and time for public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 15-118, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, Planned Mixed Use Overlay District, to be established on Howe Industrial Park on approximately 27.79 acres located at 320 London Road, and ordinance number 15-119, an ordinance approving a rezoning from M2 General Manufacturing District to M2 PMU General Manufacturing District with a Planned Mixed Use Overlay District for Howe in West Hill Park on approximately 27.79 acres located at 320 London Road.
Thank you. What does the wish of counsel on consent agenda?
Acceptance.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Mr. Rohr and a second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. D. Genova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, question carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments, or anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, so now we'll move on to committee reports.
I have none, Ms. Mayor.
I'm sorry. I have no idea how to make this stop.
Do you have any committee reports while you're looking?
I don't think.
Mr. D. Genova.
I have none. Nothing.
I think we're trying to organize a additional parking and safety meeting for some top rounders in January or something. Here's the situation with parking of the county that we face the parking issues to keep up with.
I thought it was scheduled for January 4th.
Is it formally scheduled now?
Fourth.
Fourth, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. All right, and I have nothing, so we'll move on to item eight. If the clerk will please read in the record ordinance 15-112.
Ordinance number 15-112, an ordinance adding a new chapter 192 to the codified ordinances of the City of Delaware regarding municipal income tax and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason to comply with the state of Ohio imposed deadline for the effective date of these required changes, and as such will be in full force and effect January 1st, 2016.
Thank you. Mr. Seltzer.
Thank you. This is the third reading of changes that are mandated by state law. We had some previous discussions. I think we're prepared to move forward with making these changes. I will note, one of the changes that's included is the creation of a tax board of review. I think we talked about that at a previous finance committee meeting. We do need to get this board up and running first part of the year, so we'll need, I believe the way it's worded, there's two members appointed from council that are citizens and can't be employees or council members, and then one, I believe, by the city manager, chief executive officer. So I'll follow up with you the first part of the year and try to get those positions filled. If there's any other questions, we could entertain them tonight. I'd like to, if we can approve it with this third reading with the emergency clause so that it is effective January 1st.
Questions for Mr. Seltzer? And what is the wish of counsel?
Move for approval of the emergency clause. Second.
I'm motioning Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. D. Genova. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. D. Genova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance 15-112.
Second.
Did you need to suspend the rules? I know you did the emergency clause.
No. Is this there?
No. Then this is wrong, okay. Another motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. D. Genova. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. D. Genova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yeah, question carries. And it's not 7:30 yet, so we'll go on to presentations. And we'll start with Judge Sundgren. Would you like to go first? You all come up together? What would you like to do?
We can come together.
Okay. You can have a third chair.
David Sundgren, Municipal Court Judge, and I'll entertain any questions you have, obviously. I can give you just a very quick update. There's really not a lot of change. There's no change in our staffing levels on our side. It's great to have Judge Hemmerter working with us now. It's been a great working relationship even in the short time, and things are, the transition's been very, very good. Not any big surprise to me or I'm sure anybody else. Let's see, third, just in terms of things that happened last year, just some of the changes and some of the things that we spent some money on, and I think made some good changes. Number one, if you get a chance sometime to come over, usually at 10:00 in the morning, any morning, and watch the jail arraignments, you know, if you've ever been in the court and you see the big pull-down screen in courtroom A, that really hasn't been used for years. There's a big projector that sits up there dormant. Well, this year, we had this projector put in both of the courtrooms, put a big screen in courtroom B, and it really, a lot of that credit goes to Nick Lockhart, who really did most of the installation work, saved us a ton of money by doing it that way. And so now, when we do the jail arraignments, they can project that on the screen, people in the back can see so easily what's going on and hear much better. It's just a big improvement all the way around, instead of people trying to look at a small TV craning their necks and trying to see what's happening. So that just might seem like a little change, but it really adds a lot to the quality of what happens in the courtroom and the professionalism of all of that. We've upgraded a lot of security issues this year. We're going to FOB system for all of our doors. We're not quite done with that. We still have some more to do. That's been very important for multiple reasons. Courtroom security is front and center, obviously all public buildings are, so we're really working hard on that. Gives us better options to be able to track, you know, who comes in and out, when and where, and when people leave. When you've got change or turnover, you can deactivate those FOBs and make sure people don't have access who shouldn't. So that's still moving on and working out quite well. We've stood some money out of our specialized funds for a couple of things, just recently, for radios, for our bailiffs, because we found, based on some situations we had this year, our communication wasn't as good as it should be, especially in emergency situations. So now, they're all hooked into 911, they're all tied into each other, and we're finding just last month, where that's been in place, that it's not only better for security, but it's a tremendous time saver. I feel like in working with Dick Tracy's, they're all talking into their watch, but it works quite well, and it's, you know, it costs about 18,000 some dollars to get that done. But it's really going to be a major improvement. We've added, again, because of the bailiffs, when they're going out serving papers, they're really in a lot of jeopardy too, because they're out there alone, they're in some pretty remote parts of the county, and their communication hasn't been as good as it should be with the 911 center and even with us and each other. So that's going to help in that regard. We also have purchased bulletproof vests and things of that nature to upgrade the security. You know, when they're evicting people, it's not a real safe environment all the time. So that's a lot of what we've been working on the past year. There's more of that to come next year. Next year, there's going to be a major upgrade for what's called our JAV system, which is kind of the framework that houses the basic court presentation system that's used in the courtroom, that does all the audio/video. That system probably hasn't really been upgraded since, I know since I've been there, so that's 14 years. And I think we're, Nick told me today, we're the only court that's still using the old operational system, so that's going to be about a $60,000 item this year, but it has to be done, and it's really going to add a lot to what we do. So those are really the, probably in the area of security and things of that nature, the major things that we're doing right now. There hasn't been a lot of changes you could see on the income or the expense side of things, and I think things are growing reasonably well. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
My turn. Cindy Genova, Municipal Court Clerk. Like Judge Sundgren, we've pretty much kept our budget the same. I do have a 30-year individual retiring next year, so I do have a large cash payout that's coming out. And one of the things that Judges Sundgren and Gormley I worked on a couple of years ago was eliminating some of that, and so in our benefit package, if you'll remember, we cut down the amount of sick leave and the vacation. So some people are grandfathered in, but the new folks are coming in, won't get as much vacation. Couple of things that the clerk's office was involved in this year, the big one was e-citations. We were the second court in Ohio to go live with the Highway Patrol, and we receive all of their citations through the internet now. Few people still write now and then when you get someone coming through or someone transferred new to the post. What used to take us about a week to do, takes us four or five hours to do now. So that's great. Along with Kathy Hastings retiring, I lost my chief deputy clerk about a month ago. So she is now the clerk at Mount Vernon Municipal Court, so I'm very proud of her that she was able to take that next step, but I really lost a valued employee, so we're rebuilding now. Another thing that we did was we worked with the Delaware County Bank. We were the first customer to go with the positive pay, and so every day, we download the checks that we have issued to their internet or to their web server, and none of our checks can be cashed at any of their banks until it's been approved by us. And part of the reason that we worked with them on that is that there were courts in northeastern Ohio that where their checks were being fraudulently cashed. Printers are good now, people were cutting checks, and so we did this as a proactive step as to not have that happen to our accounts. As you're aware, Nick worked with City IT on the website overhaul. We're continuing our cross-training. We are currently rebuilding our counter, Councilman D. Genova. I am so happy to say. We're a little behind on it, but hopefully we'll be done. Yeah, they had some challenges that they, you know, they expect to go six weeks, and it was four weeks. Now we're a little bit more than six weeks that it'll go, but hopefully before the end of the year, maybe I'll get that for my New Year's present. I was hoping to get it for my Christmas present, but...
When you do, you call me and we'll go to lunch.
It is, we have half of it done, and they are working on the other half right now. And the staff is just tickled, they are not going to have to stand anymore for their time at the counter, they will be able to sit. So since 1992, anybody who worked at the counter stood the whole time, and that'll be a pleasant relief for them. Another thing that we're doing, I guess we have purchase orders in, but we, with the FOB system and some security issues that happened, I had to pull Nick off some other things. So some things that we were going to do this year, finishing up next year, one of them is records online. And so we have a purchase order now, and this is the way Nick explained it to me, and it's really good. We currently have this much internet, we're going to need this much internet. So we're working with Scott, and this will be able to, we're able to mirror the city's IT with the court's IT, and so we can go back and forth. If there's any power out here, we can load it up over there and vice versa kind of thing. Let's see, what else? I think that's all. Oh, and we're just continuing cross-training, starting to cross-train my civil into my criminal traffic. So that's been a great, great help to have the staff be able to help each other and help wherever. Any questions?
The mayor has asked me to serve as liaison between Municipal Court and Council.
Good. Well, we're happy to have you do that. Well, I think we've just had a great year, and I'm just proud of what we've accomplished in the clerk's office.
One question, one of the things that the police department is exploring with IT and us, is any different way of doing our parking tickets, doing it, giving the ability of people to pay online as well as automating it?
Okay.
How would that...
We only receive the parking tickets if they fail to pay.
If it goes into court.
Right, only if it goes into pay. And then they can pay us online, but hopefully they'll pay you first, so we don't have to do all that work.
But you mentioned what the troopers are doing are...
It's, they're filing their traffic tickets.
Okay.
Online. Instead of handwriting their tickets, they take the driver's license and they swipe it into their machine, and it automatically loads the name and address and identifiers and all that information, and then it chooses a section of law, whatever speed code or whatever they're doing. And I'm sure Chief Pichonowski is aware of this, that that program through the Highway Patrol is available to all law enforcement in the state of Ohio for free, except you have to buy your own printers for the cruisers and that kind of thing, but the application is available.
You have to just email in the ticket?
Yeah. We email receipts now, so...
And that's cut down on...
Oh, our entry time. We would have to enter each one of those by hand, and now it just electronically comes over. We have to accept it and make any changes that we may need to make to it, but it's cut down on the entry that it takes. However, we have plenty of work to do. That doesn't change how many staff I need. We're still working on...
That was my next question.
Yeah, okay, just say it.
I had a quick question.
Well, another thing that we did was, I'm sorry, Darren. I think I have the floor.
Yeah. I'll ask after you're done.
I'm kidding. Another thing that we started doing recently too is assisting the judge's office, and we're now assigning the initial hearing, when someone pleads not guilty, instead of waiting seven to 10 days to get it in the mail before they leave the building that day, they have their hearing date, so it can't be lost in the mail or whatever. They've been served right then.
The mic comes as a shock that some people said they didn't get it.
Mails likes to steal those forms, don't they? My question was, you may have noted, noticed that we started doing a lot of the tax cases, and we just hired a new attorney who's going to be doing a lot more of those. Has that been a burden on your office, or is that, if we do more of that, is it going to be a problem?
I wouldn't say it's a burden. I never turn down work. I'm happy to have it.
Our court costs, yeah.
The question I had, and I think that through the prosecutor's office, Tim Dawson was talking to us, and he said that you have 3,000 to 5,000 of those or something, but not to expect that many in a year, because...
Yeah, I wouldn't expect 3,000 to 5,000 in a year.
Yeah. What would we expect to get, how many additional cases do you think a year?
Well, it depends on at what point it becomes a case, but charges are actually filed. I don't know, you may not have a whole lot of them sending out some paperwork, but that could be 1,500 people. But we found out until they get the initial mailing, nobody, it's like they never got anything in mail until they got that.
Didn't know how to pay taxes?
In Ohio, and they know, they just don't want to. And again, what we want to try to make sure is that we can minimize, and if we have some capacity even with completing the, you know, the paperwork sort of thing, because what we found out is not many of them go much beyond that. You know, the charges are filed, the person appear, they interact with the prosecutor's office, and most of the issues are taken care of. I don't think any of them's gone to trial or anything like that, but...
Oh, yeah.
But it could be, and I know realize just getting those initial charges filed is where the paperwork starts, and it could be about 1,500 a year.
And I'm going to have our attorney work with you to figure the best way to minimize that impact. Is it do them all at once and pick a day and get them all in there, or is it spread them out so you don't see them?
Not 1,500 all in one.
Well, no, it would have to be 1,500, but I mean, like, big batches, small batches, but we can deal with that offline.
Yeah, we can talk about that. The only thing that I didn't realize that was going to happen, I'll have to order more case file jackets, so that'll just be a little bit of an increase for me in my office supplies to do that, but, you know, hopefully that'll be offset by any court costs that are received.
Yeah, we never waive their court costs.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
But we can talk if the numbers are high, we can scale it back and go from there.
Yeah, not a problem.
I have to say, kudos to you, I have to say, we agreed to hire with David Mosher. I have the privilege of mentoring him under the federal court program when he was a lawyer. Just thinking of you, good hire. He's a good lawyer, smart young man, he's a local guy, he's going to do a great job, I'll see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. D. Genova, have something else?
I have one other one for the clerk. Space and...
Wow.
Because I don't want it to be the clamp of some of the police in the court, which we've gone through this for many years.
You mean, I'm not going to get that downstairs that you promised me?
Oh, well, maybe.
That 800 square, oh, no.
Depends on how much he wants to invest in it.
Well, hopefully, here's what'll happen. I was able to attend, or I attended the National Association of Court Managers Conference this year in, I forget, Louisville. And one of the things that they had a session on was judicial tools. And I brought that information back, and what it is, is software that will have to be developed. It was in Arizona or Minnesota or someplace, and so it would have to be developed, a system where, which will eventually take us paperless. Once we go paperless, our records room, I don't know that I'll still need as many or any of that filing space, so I would have room to expand in that records room. And then with the new counter setup with four stations there, not that I would have someone at the counter all day, but maybe you and I would partner up, and you would be at the counter in the morning, and we could share a desk, and I would be at the desk in the morning, and then we'd switch. So I think that there's room for expansion in my office yet.
So that'll be coming probably in '16 or '17?
Well, in '16, our case maintenance system is supposed to be upgraded from JBase to SQL, and you can talk to Scott about how wonderful that is. I just know it's going to be, I've been told it's going to be wonderful. And then, once they get that done, and I'm trying to prompt them into, let's not wait till that's done, let's start having some focus groups now on getting this next package. And we'll have to meet with other judges from other courts that use the same software, but I'm trying to push it as quickly as possible. Poor Judge Hemmerter came from a paperless Attorney General's Office to all this paper that she has to deal with now.
We have 460 attorneys of the Ohio General Office, and we didn't have a file.
Yeah.
We had a laptop and a flash drive.
That'd be great.
We have papers, lots, lots of papers.
We have to retain them.
So, but yeah, and so now, my retention schedule, if it's on a PDF, I don't have to keep the file. But we have to find a way, I mean, which is the judicial part, the bench tool, which says, I have a motion, enter that in and send it electronically to whichever judge needs to rule on it, so they know that they have it, and then they can send it back electronically after they have made a ruling.
Excellent.
Can you go back and scan old files?
We are scanning. I have some part-time folks. Now, I could have contracted that out, but I could never certify that all the records were there, so I pay college students, high school students, and a couple retiree and another individual, minimal, not minimum wage, but minimal amounts to come in and scan.
How far back are you on that right now?
We started at 98. I think they're in 2001 or 2002 in civil and not as far in criminal traffic. So we're plugging away.
Any other questions? Do you have anything else to add, Mary Ann?
No, I mean, everybody in the municipal court works hard, we're on the bench for six hours a day, give or take some, so we're very busy, but I do encourage everybody to come down to municipal court, so you know what we're talking about. I mean, I sometimes think, you know, we talk about e-file, and I don't think people know the impact that has on the system until you see it. So I encourage you just to come to municipal court, we're very busy, but we'd be happy to see you.
We had...
Come on, Monday.
Yes. Mondays is a good day. Fridays is a good day.
There's always something enjoyable that you can observe at court.
Well, we had, I think it was two, right after Thanksgiving, we had 30 people in jail to deal with that Monday morning, so...
We don't like long holidays.
Yeah. No, we don't. I mean, we...
There's got a couple of those coming up.
We enjoy not being there, but we certainly pay for it. All right. Well, thanks for that. Oh, and I think we have another issue on your agenda for the benefit package, and the only change we had in that was, last year, we came in with this great idea of let's just work on Jug Day. And I didn't think it out, that the prosecutors would have to work on Jug Day. So we're going to close again on Jug Day, half-day.
Half-day, yeah.
Just like the rest of it.
Yeah, just like the rest of it, Tom.
We realized it was on American, so...
It was on Delawarean. So we're going back to that. Okay? I think, I believe that's the only change in the benefit package.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, folks.
We'll go, the time is now 7:30, so go back up to item nine, which is the second public hearing and second reading.
public hearing and second reading. If the clerk please read this in.
Ordinance number 15-113, an ordinance making appropriations for the year 2016 and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and further to provide lawful appropriations available for expenditure by January 1, 2016. And such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Really, this is just a continuation of the budget process. Technically, we have a public hearing.
We can open the public hearing if there's anybody who would like to say anything. And then we'll close that public hearing.
And my recommendation would be, we take care of the rest of the business on the agenda and just come back to this at the end of the meeting as it's listed on the agenda.
Okay. So now we'll move on down to item 11, which is the second reading of ordinance 15-114. If the clerk please read this in the record.
Ordinance number 15-114, an ordinance amending the Delaware Municipal Court and Clerk of Court employee benefits and lead policies and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 30, 2015. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you.
Well, they all left, but you heard what their changes were. It was just the half-day pay for Jug Day, effective December 30, 2015.
Don't we take employee benefit issues to three readings?
We were going to take this on the 21st. Our recommendation was adopt all of these on the, every Monday night. Yeah, all three of them.
Okay, let's do item 12, which is second reading of ordinance 15-115. If the clerk please read this in the record.
Ordinance number 15-115, an ordinance amending ordinance number 15-88, establishing the pay and benefits for various part-time and intermittent and seasonal employees of the City of Delaware and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 30, 2015. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Jessica could not be here today, so I'm, tonight, so I'm pinching for her. This is the permanent part-time pay ordinance. The two changes would be the 2% wage increase, which is what the city manager is proposing in the budget. And then we are also proposing that some standard language that we have in our, most of our union contracts, as well as our non-union management pay plan, is a $60 credit. We've always called it traditionally, we've called it a $60 credit for the Parks and Recreation. And that change would just be, if you're unfamiliar with that credit is, it's an opportunity for employees that work here to, you know, buy a punch card at Hidden Valley Golf Course, rent one of the shelters or the Hillborne Room, things of that nature. Mostly just a small credit that is to encourage people to get involved in our community and do use some of our facilities. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So you're just saying that change will not apply to the part-time?
Is that correct? To the seasonal employees, right.
Any questions for Jackie?
Okay, we'll take this to other reading, then? And we'll move on to item 13, which is the second reading ordinance 15-116.
Ordinance number 15-116, an ordinance amending the Management Professional Technical Confidential and Supervisory Employees Pay Plan and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 30, 2015, which coincides with the new calendar year. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you again. Jessica's still not here. So the major changes in the Management Professional Technical Confidential and Supervisory Employees Pay Pay, Pay Plan, is the addition of the proposed Parks and Natural Resources Director and moving the Economic Development Director into the Department Head Pay Plan. Typically, that, or historically, that position has been in the Management Pay Plan, which is separate from the Department Head Pay Plan. There's a note here that page five of the pay plan is missing. I know that since then, since this was originally brought to council, you have received page five. Page five was Department Head Pay Plan. The pay range has been increased by 2%. And the city manager has proposed, the department heads have the corresponding annual pay salaries, as you'll see on that, on page five. Other than that, I believe that's all the changes. We've done a little housekeeping in there. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on these.
Any questions by council? Moving on to item 14, which is consideration of ordinance 15-117. If the clerk please read this in the record.
Ordinance number 15-117, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation, the state, as the local public agency, LPA, in the matter of D L-23-13.17 Project P I D 94527 and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Ms. Freina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is standard ODOT language agreement. We do many of these. This one really covers the, our participation with the Pennsylvania project. Construction is 100% through ODOT, but for, it was a waterline improvement, which the city was going to make a few years back and decided at the time to defer that until, so we could integrate it with the project and make sure they're coordinated well. So tonight, this ordinance allows the city manager to enter into an agreement to be responsible for $145,670 of anticipated waterline relocation cost that will be constructed with the project with approval of this. With approval of this tonight, we are asking for a first reading. It is time-sensitive, and that ODOT would like to let this project by the end of January be under construction by late March, early April on the project. We're asking for approval of this tonight. I can answer any questions regarding this.
Just to point out that this project has been accelerated due to the fact that we were able to acquire the right-of-way, I think, in a shorter time period. So this was, or nearly, this was going to happen next year. So this is a really exciting project for the city. It's one that's been on the planning horizon for these two decades, and it's been in, on our docket for at least 10 years.
10 years.
And so it will improve the connectivity of 23 at Pennsylvania. You'll now be able to go southbound on 23. You can't go southbound now, and you'll be able to...
Exit northbound.
Exit northbound.
Legally, safely.
Legally, which you can't do now, so.
I thought it wasn't.
Well, it's...
Doing all the time.
How long do you think it'll take them to do the...
They're estimating completion and construction in 2016. Should be open this time next year. Good project.
So it says the current deposit due for the waterman is $145,670. Final amount due, the city appropriated $200,000 in 2015, so you need this additional one?
No, this is, this is the current estimate now, based on the file engineers estimate. We have $200,000 available, and we're certainly hoping it'll be less than that.
Well, it's a number of the means. Any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm moving suspending rules requiring three readings.
Motion by Mr. Degenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Degenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Degenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Degenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for the adoption of ordinance 15-117, estimated.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Degenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Degenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion, cheers.
Thank you so much.
And item 15 is consideration of ordinance 15-118. If the clerk please read this in the record.
Do you like me to read 16 and 17 also?
You can use much of you, with no hard desires.
Ordinance number 15-118, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district to be established on Howe Industrial Park on approximately 27.79 acres located at 320 London Road. Ordinance number 15-119, an ordinance approving a rezoning from M2 General Manufacturing District to M2 PMU General Manufacturing District with a planned mixed-use overlay district for Howe Industrial Park on approximately 27.79 acres located at 320 London Road. Ordinance number 15-120, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for Howe Industrial Park on approximately 27.79 acres locate, excuse me, zoned M2 PMU General Manufacturing District with a planned mixed-use overlay district located at 320 London Road.
Thank you. We have Lance tonight sitting in for Dave.
Yes, Mr. Howe, who is in the audience, is proposing to rezone the approximately 28 acres, 28 acres from M2, M2 PMU. And this site will be divided into four specific sub-areas. And the intent of the rezoning is to allow the current and future mix of heavy and light industrial uses, along with commercial and office uses, to coexist on the site per the proposed development text that will be associated with this. The city has been working with the owner for several years on this project, and we hope it's a win-win for the city and the owner on this subject project. This will be coming to you on January 11th for the public hearing for the rezoning, preliminary development plan, and the conditional use permit. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Lance? Or any questions for the applicant, since he's here? I will tell you this, I watch this place get cleaned up all the time. I'm just amazed every time I get out there how much nicer it looks. I can't thank John enough for what he has done for that, that part property. So, do you have any questions for John and Lance? Okay. See you in January. Merry Christmas. Okay, moving on to city manager's report?
Nothing to report tonight, except that we're nearing the end of the budget process.
There we are.
Well, I should point out that the street sweeper did get downtown this weekend, I believe, and has made a difference in terms of what they were able to do, and it looked quite good, so. But, no, ready for the budget.
Okay. And we'll move on to item 19, which is budget review. We're going to do Stacy first?
Yes.
Come on up. Yes, we have.
That's it. That's it, yeah. Stacy wasn't able to be here before, he had a, so he was here tonight to talk about...
We have all our Easter egg colors, too, between Dan and Stacy.
As I said, I went to Dan and raided his closet tonight. First, I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight. Just go over some things real quick with you, some highlights that the Parks and Natural Resources Department was able to accomplish, some goals that we have for 2016, as well as some of the changes that you see in the budget. 2015 highlights for parks. The parks, along with the public utilities staff, were able to accomplish a sustainable project at Blue Lion Stone Park, and we were recognized by the Delaware General Health Districts, Keep Delaware County Beautiful with a Going Green Award. That was just a week or two ago, so. Lot of work done by Public Utilities Department on that, but it's nice to get recognized with that award. Other, other projects in 2015, Mingo Tennis Court Rehab, the start, the development of the dog park, development of Veterans Park, new playground equipment was installed at Blue Lion, Mingo, and Oakhurst. If you haven't been out to 440 East William, we also started the construction of our greenhouse out there, should be completed next week. Some quick numbers for you, we spent 3,926 and a half hours mowing. That was park-related and right-of-way related. Spent 2,144 hours removing trash from public rightways and parks. 1,143 hours on ball field maintenance, and 1,662 and a half hours completing general park maintenance, as with a full-time staff of six employees and roughly about 12 seasonal employees. Some of our goals for 2016 in the parks are, of course, complete Veterans Park Spray and Play, complete and open Veterans Plaza, complete and open the dog park, complete the bike trail on Troy Road. The bike trail master plan that was started, and the start utilizing the greenhouse to help beautify the city landscape beds, parks, and other city properties. As well as prioritization of the park improvement levy projects and either reconvene the committee that we had prior or bring back to council. Some of the increases in the parks budget was, we increased, we're asking for an increase of 1,000 hours of seasonal hours, 500 of those hours to help maintain Veterans Park Spray and Play, as well as Veterans Plaza, and an additional 500 hours for the oversight of the right-of-way mowing responsibilities that are reverted back to the Parks and Natural Resources Department. There was a slight increase in $6,000 for the purchase of a new mowing trailer, and an increase in wages due to the position of Parks and Natural Resources Director. If you have any questions on the parks and the things, I can answer those for you now.
Questions? Stacy?
Urban forestry, I know, I know, a lot of these come before you guys for, you know, when am I getting my tree planted, or when's my ash tree getting removed? We were able to plant 351 trees this year. What that did was that got us through the calendar year of 2011 and started 2012. So trees that were, that due to Emerald Ash Bore, what have you, we were able to get up into 2012. So with what's budgeted and what we anticipate, anticipate dying, we're probably looking about 2017 before we totally caught up with that. I know this is something that we'll discuss with the Shade Tree Committee and that, but I wanted to bring that up for you tonight. So I think that's pretty impressive, considering we had over 1,200 ash trees that were affected. So we, once again, received Tree City USA Award for our 34th consecutive year. We pruned 764 trees and removed 62 trees this year. Our goal is to, I guess, I'll tie this in together. I asked for a $10,000 increase in our budget. 5,000 of that was to help us plant trees, as well as prune trees. So 5,000 for planting, 5,000 for pruning. What that will do for us as well is in the 5,000 for pruning, that'll almost double the amount of trees that we were able to prune this year by contracting that out. And checking around with prices, we're right around $7 a tree, so that'll help us get roughly about 1,500 trees.
How much a tree?
$7. Talking more in your new development trees, not Northwest neighbors. Not the Northwest neighbors.
Mr. Jeff, the Shade Tree Commission is, we're going to do a pruning program, and hopefully we'll kick it off in 17. We're going to do Cheshire Crossing for the trees on a, similar to what we offer for the academies that we do, citizens group, educate them, train them, and then they're going to go out and volunteer to help prune trees. So that's going to be a big savings.
Yeah, we've been working on that program for about a year, year and a half now, so.
Yeah. Also, on the ash bore, is that included ones that are in the cemetery or not?
Cemetery will be part of...
Part of the one that'll be taken care of.
How many are there in the cemetery?
There were 40, I don't know how many.
We removed, let me jump ahead.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. We removed, I don't have that number in front of me.
Some big ones.
Yeah, we removed quite a few trees this year, and there's another allocation in next year's cemetery budgets to remove more and more. We had 40-some trees, just not ash trees, but we had 40-some trees down there that we were looking at removing.
Thank you. Any other questions on this?
I have a question on trees, but I don't remember originally what it was. But I know that I had a question, and it was about how much is in the tree fund versus how much we're transferring into the budget? And I can't find where I wrote down specifically what my... Do you know what I'm asking?
Yes, in fact, we...
Yes, in fact, we were gonna, under other funds, we were gonna talk about the tree fund and the urban forest, urban forestry fund, I don't know if that was in your email, I don't think it was, but you had, I think, asked this question, this has come up before.
Okay.
So we can either discuss it now or we were prepared to discuss the, discuss it under other funds, but now it's fine. Yeah. Let's look at each other. What's relevant to the discussion, I think.
What, what I was gonna explain when we were talking about other funds is just how this flows, how I'm trying to show through the budget what we're spending on trees or what's spending and it impacts two funds. We have the, what we used to refer to as the tree fund, where if a developer in lieu of planting on their site, whatever pays money, and that's page, let's see here, one eighty-eight in the miscellaneous funds. And when we looked at filling that position and calling it an arbors and actually getting a more focused efforts on trees, I took in, out of the park fund and tried to isolate some of our tree costs, so when you look at the park maintenance fund, you'll see park maintenance and we have this, this, this budget on page one to forty-six for urban forestry and it includes one employee, which is our urban forest or whatever we're calling them, the benefits for that, and then cost to, with our tree program. And at the top of that, I reflect revenue, revenues, forty-five thousand is what comes out of the general fund, that's been historically what we've allocated from tax money towards trees, it's not really specific to new trees, maintenance trees, depending on our tree program, and then what's being transferred out of the tree fund in fifty thousand dollars for new trees and that's part of our, our tree fund. There are some degree of limitations on what we can use those monies for and, again, I had a discussion again with, with Tom the other day, we had it several years ago and Dan Bennetton was the city attorney, you know, those fees are paid by a developer because they're carrying, taking down trees, which is remove, removing trees out of our inventory, you know, the funds have to be spent to get our inventory back up. Is it based on caliber inch, is it based on dollar value, is it based on number of trees? Can that tree money be used to maintain trees and maintain trees beyond what would be reasonable? If you plant a new tree, you know, for a year or two, you need to do certain things to keep it alive and so we're trying to balance that out. And, you know, as far as the specifics of your question, if it's how much is available there to plant new trees, on page one eighty-eight with, with that fifty thousand dollar allocation, there's still, and I, and I can't predict from year to year how much is gonna get paid, some years we don't get any money paid in tree funds. It looks like in two thousand fifteen, we got thirty-six thousand dollars, but with that fifty thousand dollars coming out and roughly projecting that we might get fifteen thousand dollars next year, there'll be a seventy-one thousand dollar balance in that fund. Talked over the years with Stacy is how, you know, because there were other years when there was more of a balance in that tree fund, do we look at a more consistent, a certain amount of trees per year, do we look at pretty much planting all the trees and then just go with the, you know, if we don't get any trees in a given year, we don't, we don't plant any or whatever, but that's, I think it was your question, how much is available?
Yeah, I was just wondering why we're keeping money in the tree fund when we have tree needs, why wouldn't we just try to catch up because of the ash board, we're really behind in terms of replacing trees, why wouldn't we just spend it?
You know, and again, I'm not saying why we wouldn't or wouldn't, there was, had been discussions in years past that that balance was as much as a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, whatever, I think there were somewhat limitations just on the, the volume of trees that could be planted in a given year. I don't remember what the other issue we talked about a year or two ago about that tree fund and that balance, but-
We did draw it down, like a couple of years ago, we actually increased the amount that we were planning for the contracted trees and I-
I'm just thinking of a developer and I have to put money into a fund to replace trees because I'm taking them down, I don't want it to stay in a fund, I want to see the trees.
Right.
Well, we have a situation too, I don't know if it'll be in sixteen, is where there's a developer that's going to in lieu of give the tree fund a hundred thousand dollars. Now, will that go in this funding or?
Wow, and, and that's where, and again, over the last couple of years, trying to push for it, again, this is something parks might do is, is having a strategy related to, from how you, what you can spend the money on, and again, we can update, get a legal opinion, but I don't believe in what I know about how fees, what's the difference between a fee and a tax and a whatever else, that we can take a fee that is paid because they're reducing from our inventory and use it to replace an ash board tree that died, we're not adding to our inventory account, that's a different issue as opposed to planting a new tree.
I see how we're not adding to our inventory though, because we're not counting a dead tree.
Well, you know, in, in the world of like impact fees or whatever else, you're replacing something, you're not adding more to it, you know, whether that's, if, if, you know, if all of our trees burned down in one of our parks, would it be right for a developer to pay money that, you know, to go in and replace our trees there because we happened to lose a bunch of trees to a fire? So you're just replacing, as opposed to the intent was that your, your replacement was there and, and at some point, again, that was one of the, as Dan talked, kind of did some, it's not real clear what our ordinance says, you know, what, what's the proximity of these new trees to the development that's paying those funds too? And anyways, there's, there's a couple of issues, but all in all, it doesn't make any difference, we still could plant new trees wherever.
Yeah, trees are the trees of the trees.
Right.
So if I, if I wanna put a park on the southeast side of town and then buy thirty acres and it's open land, we can put trees in there from the tree fund.
Right.
Okay. I think your question though is we have, can we use it to replace trees that were diseased?
I mean, I think we're way in the weeds.
Well, that's something that we just get clarification from.
And I know it's not easy, it's just like our impact fee, can we use it to replace impact fees, to replace a, something that's worn out? Well, you know, again, it's, it's, it's a different, you know, and it really gets into the details, it's hard to do it tonight, but what, what legally we can, you know, then it becomes tax of sorts as opposed to a fee sometimes, so we have to be careful in how we use our funds.
I guess if there's a hole where a tree used to be.
Well, we get into the economics too and, and Stacy and the arbiter has that problem is labor to plant that tree unless you put the dollars in the budget, because we planted, I don't know, four, three, four hundred trees last year.
Three hundred and fifty-one?
We could have probably planted five hundred, but we just didn't have the dollars and the labor to do it.
No, but we have the dollars, we just-
But we didn't allocate it to planting the trees.
Right, what I'm saying is should we leave it in a fund or is it better for our community to let it serve its purpose to invest it in trees?
If sta, if staff has the manpower to do it, we should do it, but if not, we shouldn't arbitrarily contract it out, because we're gonna catch up eventually over three years by doing it this way, that's how we've always done it, is by doing it so many a year, because they can only handle so many a year, they can only prune so many a year.
Well, and, and once they're in the ground, we still have to go back and maintain those trees and water them, I mean, if we get a dry summer, that's a lot of time that would be spent out there, so that, you know, there's a number that we feel comfortable with the staff too, that we can maintain once we get them in the ground, whether it's contracted out or, or done by us, you know, there's, there's still ongoing maintenance throughout the summer months with that, so.
I think part of this is getting a better clarification, updating the legal opinion as to the appropriateness of using tree, the developer tree fund revenue for not just adding to our inventory, but using it for replacement.
Have we been using it for replacement though?
No, a lot of it's been used for adding trees to different areas of the city, in the parks, different, different areas, I mean, that's what-
So can we use it for Veterans Park?
Well, Darren, can we use it for Veterans Park?
Typically, what we have in the past is, is, and again, we got into this issue a couple of years ago with this ash board and, and that's what we would, you know, we originally tried to use the, years ago, plant the trees around the general area of the development that, you know, lost the trees, because it's not just that development, it's the people that live in that area that benefit from the trees, but ultimately, we, we were running out of spaces to put the trees, you know, the way it's supposed to work, you're supposed to find another site, place on your existing site, but if they can't because they have houses or whatever else, then we start putting them in our trees and again, that's an increase, I know it's maybe hard to understand, but before our ash tree died, we had one ash tree and then we had this tree in this development, we had two trees, so we're gonna make that developer pay us money because he's taken down tree, one tree, so now we only have one tree, this ash tree, but it's died, so now, you know, that replacement of that, that's a different, we, we need to cover that differently, because even when we replace it with this money, we, we still end up with one tree in the system when we had two, so it, that's why it's, it's not, we're not increasing our, our capacity, but can we plant them in the parks? Yes. When have we, have we, can I sit here and say, you know, that whatever they, you know, they've used or, you know, whether they've not planted some of those trees, someplace where there's been an ash, a, a tree that's died, but I also know that we contribute forty-five thousand dollars out of the general fund each year and, I don't know, there's just been too many times where we planted more than that from a value per year, so, but as we move forward, if it, if it clearly, we're gonna use much, much, much more of this to replace trees as opposed to plant new trees to replace the one that was taken down, we just need to have a strategy. None of that means that we have to sit on any funds, it's just a matter of what we use it for.
So then why don't we use it to put some trees around the jogging path at Howe Park, at Veterans Park?
Good.
Does anyone have any objection to us exploring that?
That's something that should probably go up in front of the shade tree commission.
I'd just rather see them planted and, and be trees than have it sitting in the fund.
One of the reasons to carry a balance is, is because typically even when we do plant a new tree, there's a, a two-year period at least where we do need to do some maintenance stuff, and if we used all the money to plant trees and next year we don't get any new developer tree money in, then it's, we're gonna have to, you know, we, we don't have any money to maintain them other than taking more money out of it wherever we could find it someplace else, so, again, there just needs to be a little bit of a strategy behind it, I think we ought to reserve an amount to make sure that other new trees we planted and, and that need some degree of maintenance down the road, if we assume we don't get it, there have been a couple of years where we haven't gotten any money coming in, but what does that number need to be? I don't know, it may not need to be seventy-one thousand, maybe twenty, thirty thousand or something like that, so.
Okay. Jackie, could we get a number or an idea of the number of trees that we could use at that park?
Sure can.
Thank you, and then we'll just give it to the shade tree commission and I guess we can just revisit that.
Good thing.
I'm not talking about taking it all.
So where are you at now?
All right, Hidden Valley. Hidden Valley, we had eight thousand eight hundred ninety-five total rounds played in two thousand fifteen, increase from two thousand fourteen. We had fifty-two total memberships sold, decrease since two thousand fourteen.
Went down?
Yes, seventy-seven in two thousand fourteen, fifty-two this year, so twenty-five.
I mean, idea wide?
I, I, we, we need to get marketing to our younger generation, you know, our elder generation is what's basically supporting Hidden Valley and we need to, that's one of our, our goals for two thousand and sixteen is, is to market to that generation with the help of the YMCA through offering some golf lessons and maybe some youth leagues and stuff like that to help, help us generate more revenue on that. And, and also, we sold a hundred and fifty-four punch cards, which was an increase of twenty-four since two thousand and fourteen, so we also are seeing more, you know, people's time is very valuable and so they wanna get out and play around the golf, but they're not real sure if, you know, a membership's the way to go or buy ten, ten rounds and if I get out there eight, I feel comfortable in what I spent instead of I spent, you know, on a membership and I only got out there eight times and I lost a lot of money, so.
What's the annual membership?
It, it depends on whether it's senior, student, family, three, I, I don't wanna quote chat on that. Yes. So a, as our goals, continuing ways to better market the course, you know, through advertising, reaching out to various groups, took to the park board last month, we're looking, also we're doing comparisons of other nine-hole, very similar golf courses to ours to see if our rates are comparable with that, our last rate increase, I believe it was four years ago, so we're looking at that to see if our rates are in line with, with other courses. Still looking at, with, with the sustainability efforts in the, in the stormwater runoff MS four, still looking at other ways to lower maintenance costs with natural vegetation areas and stuff like that to help us lower, you know, decrease our amount of mowing time and also chemical applications. And then, of course, complete the upgrades at our course, we'll be hopefully starting those upgrades with clubhouse here very soon, so I'm still waiting on two more numbers that I gotta have in tomorrow so I can get requisitions going and get those approved, so.
Stacy, how much are green trees at that?
Eight fifteen and nine.
Eight fifty for nine?
Yeah, and then it goes up from that for weekends and then. The, the budget, we asked for a ten thousand dollar increase in our professional service line item and that's for dredging the pond, we had a couple of our citizens come to us with the pond and, you know, with the erosion and stuff coming down from William Street and down the hills sort of filled the pond in, so what started out as about ten foot deep, probably now about foot and a half deep, so. And we've been working with the Public Utilities Department on that. Any questions?
I know Lisa had a question, I think she raised a couple of weeks ago, just regarding the golf course expenditures and revenues and how do those, how can you get those more in line, is that, is that-
I mean, we've, it's something we've discussed in the past, I mean, we're budgeting a twenty-eight thousand dollar loss this year.
Right.
And we're increasing our revenues, or I'm sorry, we're increasing our expenditures, but we're not increasing our revenues and so what can we do to, we either need to spend less or earn more, I don't know that we should budget in a twenty-eight thousand dollar loss.
If you don't mind me jumping in, I mean, Tom and I had talked about this earlier this week and I think that we have some resources on staff, Stacy absolutely hit it, hit the nail right on the head, that we need to extend our demographics quite a bit because of who's supporting that golf course and, you know, it's a nice course and it's fun to play, I play it myself, I just think that a lot of people don't know about it, so we have to do a much better job finding, letting people catch us doing things right and Hidden Valley is something that's right. And I wanted to volunteer a couple of people on staff that have a marketing background to help us reach out and find out exactly how to better reach those people, get them interested in golf. We're working with, the YMCA started their classes last year and we, we want them to expand that as well as do leagues, again, getting the generation, letting them know the golf course is there and it's not expensive to play and it's something they can do that's a lot of fun, so. Those are some of the things I think that we need to do. The improvements at the clubhouse obviously need to be done desperately and, you know, we have a lot of other ideas that we would like to bring before the parks board next year, hopefully we'll get some support for those ideas.
Is one of the things that is being revisi, are we revisiting the alcohol sales at all or is that a done deal?
No, it's not a done deal.
It could be revisited.
We think that's, you know, if that's part of an overall program to, it's not gonna get the younger, I mean, I don't, I don't know, when we say younger, I don't know if we mean what.
Hopefully not younger.
Younger group we want there, I mean, you know, I think we've probably got the age appropriate, age, younger age group there, getting them there as well, but I think it was probably for the adults who might be used to being on a course where that's permissible, permissible, so.
Do we think that's holding us back from?
I, I, I don't know, I, I'm not sure whether-
I think they bring it anyways, we just don't, I think they just bring it cooler in.
Anecdotally, a lot of people say they just bring it on.
And so we're missing out on that.
I think it's a very, kind of a specialized, you have a lot of older people who play there who really enjoy it and, you know, my experience has been appreciate the fact that it's there because it kind of fits their skill sets and it's trying to compete though among a number of other golf courses that are out there, not a lot of nine-hole courses, but there's obviously golf is pretty big in central Ohio, so we just have to find, figure out, increase what we think that the, the other groups that might play, do a better job of it.
When was the last time the golf course earned enough revenue to pay for itself?
I'd have to go back and look at that.
Well, you know, again, it, it, it wasn't necessarily set up in that regard, the only reason it's, you see it this way, although I argue we're not doing as many recreation programs as we are and have in the past, but was just to isolate some of the costs that were associated with our- that were associated with a recreation program like others. We don't charge people to play tennis on our tennis courts. We don't do a lot of things, very few things anymore in our parks that are reg, we're not going to charge people with the splash pad. Um, and, you know, it's not unlike that, there are places that are for profit things that do those sort of things. So we, we kind of wanted to have a gauge on what was actually occurring at the, at the, uh, the golf course. So somewhat to answer your question, if you look in two thousand thirteen, I guess, in, with the way you're asking the question, we took in a hundred and sixty thousand, we spent a hundred and fifty-eight. So we covered our costs. Now, there's some indirect costs that, you know, Stacy's time and some of the things that aren't allocated towards that golf course, but, um, you know, sometimes the weather, sometimes monitoring what's coming in and going on, um, uh, can have an effect on that. I can say that we've not subsidized the golf, golf course fund as long as I've been here, technically, other than indirectly with some staffing assistance with actual dollars, uh, for twenty-five years. Now that fund balance is going a little bit south, um, and, and, and we probably won't be at, at a hundred and ninety-four in expenses, a hundred and sixty-seven. We usually look at things from a budget standpoint, think it might a little bit better. But if we are, I probably went back over the last seven or eight years, there's probably about a six, seven, eight thousand dollar difference between revenues and expenditures. So ultimately it may get to that point where we either need to pick up sales or look at how we take care of the course. Um, it is for, uh, the type of course it is, it is well-maintained. You hate to say, well, does it need to be as nice? It's, it's a par-three, you know, recreational course. Um, perhaps there's some things like that. There might be some things, you know, from a marketing standpoint to get some more people to play, looking at the pricing, um, selling alcohol for one that plays golf at a lot of courses. I think you're going to probably spend as much money to keep on top of selling the limited amount of alcohol we'll sell out there because if we price it at the wrong price, um, people will bring it on anyways, like we do on regular courses. And, you know, you can't just put beer in the cooler, you've got some, uh, you know, exposure and liability related to that. So that's probably not the, 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 uh, the limiting factor. Um, you know, there may be some other things over the years would kick us around a number of different times. We don't really have a lot of members to any great extent. We don't have leagues that tie up play. A couple of years ago, we got into doing some different creative things. I think it helped push that back up, but it becomes one of those things that does take some time. And, um, I think in two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve, we focused, that was probably the last time it came up, at a budget issue and, and, you know, but then, you know, somebody not staying on top of it, 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 perhaps, uh, there may be some other issues.
That was one of those other areas, Lisa, I think, in terms of the parks director position. I think the, having the director, uh, would allow, uh, more focus, uh, more attention to that, uh, that operation and perhaps somebody who's got, uh, some background, additional background, obviously would do an outstanding job of keeping up the greens and, and treating it as a park. It's, uh, our ground superintendent out there does an outstanding job of that, but I think it's that marketing piece that, and even when we had our, our park, when we had a full-time parks and rec director, um, it, it, because of all the other parks programming that we did, we had the pool and all these other park programs, um, we still had some challenges, but I'd just say that that would be another reason, I think another, uh, responsibility of the director that could help us with that.
It seems to me like we have a need and something at some point needs to change. I mean, we lost thirteen thousand in two thousand fourteen. We lost two or ten K in two thousand fifteen and we're budgeting a twenty-eight K loss this year. So if we were operating this as a business, we would be saying, how much longer are we going to continue this way and lose money?
But we, we're not operating this as part of our recreation services that we provide to public like parks and splash pads and.
That's one way to look at it, but we're charging for this service.
Right.
So what we're charging is a pain for what the operation is. So if we're comfortable saying it's going to cost us twenty-eight thousand to operate a golf course, you're entitled to that opinion.
I guess when we had parks programming, when we had parks recreation programs, not all of those recreation programs covered their costs. They cost money and council made a decision that we weren't going to price them to the point where they were covering their costs because it would be prohibitively expensive. So that's the other way to look at it, is it is a program of the parks department. Um, and, you know, if you can, you can discuss the airport, the airport doesn't cover its costs, it probably has a narrower group of, of residents that it serves, um, and it doesn't cover its costs. There's a subsidy that goes from the general fund to the airport every year to cover those costs that otherwise wouldn't be covered. So I think the point is, let's see the ways to increase the revenue and make it more self-supporting.
Yes.
So there's less of a burden and that fund balance doesn't get to the point where it's, you know, where you have to, that it's, it's small, that much smaller. I think that makes sense. I think we can do that.
So a parks director could explore ways to increase revenue at the golf course.
Absolutely. How is that, yeah, how do you partner with other, I mean, have you partnered with the Y?
Or a parks administrator.
Or parks administrator.
What about, uh, have we had night golf and have we had, uh, tournaments from the Brown Jug in the last couple of years?
Yeah, and that, that's another thing that we're trying to look at is, does the city take over the Little Brown Jug Golf Classic, um, and, you know, not increase fees by any stretch of imagination, but would that help us out in reaching out to the youth? Um, you know, the night golf, uh, we have looked at that, but at the same time, in case you get a lot of people that are into it, we're still losing money on that because we're paying staff to be there, extra hours and that, so.
I know for years we had night golf, just as a staff.
Yeah, we had.
City employees.
Correct.
And, uh, they haven't done that in years. Been a while.
Since it's done, anything that has charged people, I don't think. The, um, I think that Lisa's concern is valid and I kind of are looking and looking closely at it the last couple of years. I just opened up a file where I went back even further years and, and that, that fund balances has been as low as sixty-five thousand dollars. You know, a good example is in two thousand twelve, we, we budgeted to take the, the fund balance down to sixty-five. We had a pretty good year, revenue was a hundred and eighty-three thousand, our expenditures were a hundred and sixty-four. So the fund balance went back up to a hundred and three. We're getting a little bit close, you know, with the last two years here, it's got some concerns. I, I, I think, you know, again, we may have a couple of good years. It's, it's been historically gone up and down, but we've never had, we've never dropped. This is as low as it's been even on a budget basis at fifty-three, but, uh, it, it certainly needs to be monitored. If we get to that point in two thousand sixteen where bad weather and we do end up, you know, and then we're looking at that again in the next year, something needs to be done and I think that will be. But in the meantime, we need to do everything we can, maybe some of the things Jackie mentioned to, to, to get it to be as cost of, you know, covering its costs as much as possible.
And I, I appreciate that, but I feel like we had this discussion a couple of years ago where we said that this was what we were going to do. So my real concern is, like Dean said, that fund balance just a couple of years ago was ninety-two thousand and this year we're budgeting it at fifty-four. So what will we do? I mean, at that rate that we're going through that fund balance, we could be out of it in the next couple of years if things don't change at the golf course. I just think we need to kind of take a realistic look at that and decide if, if that happens, will we be subsidizing it with general fund?
I think what we would do is, before we made that recommendation, we would come back to you maybe in the first quarter of the year and indicate what, uh, from a, looking at from a revenue standpoint, looking at what the current fees are, looking at what they might have to be adjusted by, also looking at some of this marketing Jackie had talked about and seeing how we can increase the utilization and what that does in terms of narrowing that gap. But you're right. I mean, it's, um, it's a, it needs attention. It needs attention, but again.
This is just the first year, Stacy, that we're really doing something with the clubhouse that we've put that off and put that off for years. And now it's going to be an expense issue.
It'll be done and, yeah, I mean, it's coming out of the CIP. That was what we had in the two thousand fifteen CIP.
And I think, I think to speak to Lisa's point, you know, and seeing this declining fund balance, it's like, I think what we need to do is set a tripwire, you know, a level, a tripwired level in that fund balance that says, you know, if it gets to forty-two thousand dollars, okay, then, then, then we have to take some sort of, uh, substantial action. You know, at that point, we're out of time, let's say, to, well, let's do some more marketing, let's, let's not look at this and, and, and really take all those things that we want to do now and get those in play and then say, once we hit this tripwire level in that fund balance, then, you know, then the, the gloves come off and then we have to really make some serious decisions as to viability and, and future use of that resource. I think that's kind of where you're coming from because you just see, keep, keep coming down and it's like, how long can this go? And I think, you know, every time you, every time we look at this, if it continues to climb, it'll get better next year. It'll get better next year. It's like when we do network stuff, give me five more minutes, I'll get it fixed. Five more minutes, I'll get it fixed. Now you have to fail save time. Once you hit that time, okay, now we're backing out, we'll change. And we need to do something like that with these fund balances. If we see they're in a declining mode, set that, set that tripwire level to say, okay, playtime's over. And I don't know what that is, but I think we need to do that so that we're not here two more years saying, oh, now we're down to twenty-eight thousand. Now we're a world herb or whatever.
You said the improvements are coming out of the CIP? We're not using any, you know, park levy funds?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, they are park levy.
Okay. I thought I made sure.
No, no, they were CIP.
Right, they're not park levy funds. We have a park, uh, improvement fund that, uh.
I thought part of the most park levy was going to this too.
It was, but we hadn't yet made a final decision on that. So we, there were a number of recommendations at the golf, that the Parks and Rec advisory made a couple of years ago to improve that golf course.
Right.
And we put those on hold until we were able to complete all of the other park levy improvements that were recommended. And, um, that was, so we then budgeted, this is a CIP, the, the clubhouse expansion, is that's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Clubhouse expansion was a, uh.
I guess I didn't realize that all got cut out.
Never got added. It was never.
I remember seeing the drawings.
No.
It was in there, it was all, it was one of the ones that were on the lower level of the, uh, parks.
And I didn't realize it got mixed.
And I, I didn't either. I didn't see it. I thought there was still money in there.
Yeah, but that's what I don't understand. If there's still money in there, why aren't we using it?
It's what that is. Because we hadn't completed all the other, we hadn't completed all the other park levy improvement projects that were initially recommended and.
We prioritized all the ones and this was one of the lower level ones.
Yeah, I mean, the, the Parks and Rec Board said, made a recommendation, if there's, if there's additional park levy funds after the projects that were approved have been completed, consider these projects and dredging, I don't know if dredging the ponds on, but the clubhouse expansion was on there.
Clubhouse expansion.
I can't recall what the other, what the other improvements were.
So how much will be left now? Do we have any idea?
I'm not sure. We have to complete Veterans Park, we have to complete, figure out what we're doing with the irrigation, we have a bike path to complete, we have, uh, that's pretty much the, the majority of the projects. And once we're finished with those, then it's.
When will we be finished with those? This year?
The end of, probably the end of this construction year. Early part of two thousand sixteen, depending on the bike path. That's really the last remaining piece and Stacy will tell you, we earmark money for irrigation projects, but he, uh, for all of the parks, uh, which we've, we set aside money for that.
That goes back to the, to what I've mentioned in the parks budget, um, is re-prioritizing those and come back before council with what's left, what projects are left, what funding is left. Bring back to you and show you what exactly is left in the park improvement dollars.
I, I just know the clubhouse needs work back.
Yes.
I mean, it's a beautiful course, it's absolutely gorgeous. The clubhouse sucks, sorry.
And that's being.
It's just old and it needs to be upgraded and.
Yeah.
That would be a reason I wouldn't choose that course if I wanted to go later. It's not where one be, so.
Right.
Any other questions about the golf course? What did you do there? About treasures in Delaware.
Uh, Oak Grove Cemetery, real quick, um, most of you have seen, we hosted, um, a, a couple of things that we're really proud of is getting volunteers down to the, to the golf, or to the golf course. I'm still stuck on that one. Uh, to Oak Grove Cemetery, you know, we hosted Dom Tar down there, um, shut down for the day. That was over two hundred volunteers that day and what they assisted with, uh, numerous pruning projects, um, straightening markers, they painted the fence along, uh, some Dusky Street, made a lot of nice improvements down there. Um, we hosted an additional, um, sixty volunteers from Ohio Wesleyan University on Make a Difference Day, um, and they assisted with raking leaves and, and like I told at the, uh, park board, uh, they did a wonderful job, but the next day you couldn't tell that they really did anything, you know, because it had rained and, and the winds picked up, but, um, they did an awesome job down there. Um, if you haven't been down, we started, um, some rehabilitation on the red barn. Um, it's got some new wood on it, cupolo, um, is being, uh, was done as well. Weather still holding out a little bit for us, but I'm not sure if we're going to get it painted yet this year, um, but we've already got those, um, allocated for in, in two thousand sixteen. Um, you know, the, the, the foundation was tuck pointed and stuff, so, and barn's really looking nice if you haven't been down. Um, and then once again, removed several, uh, dead trees from the property. Um, you know, I was down there, um, for the funeral last week and I, I was, I mean, I'm, I'm in there quite a bit, but it was just impressive that day to see and I got a lot of compliments back from my family that, uh, you know, really liked the improvements that, that we've seen down there. Um, some of our goals, um, evaluating the use of the, uh, along with the, uh, finance department, the use of the perpetual funds, um, continue, uh, to look into and secure additional volunteer efforts. We've, we've already reached out to those same groups and they're still interested. We just might do a little something different with Dom Tar next year and go into our park systems and stuff like that as well. Um, complete the, uh, rehabilitation on the red barn, uh, continue with the trees, um, and then establish an advisory board, um, to help, uh, evaluate the methods of enhancing the cemetery, um, plan for the present and the future, uh, of Oak Grove Cemetery. I know that that was, um, well, it was originally there, uh, when it was, uh, the association, I remember, is that correct?
Cemetery.
Um, and, and so we're looking at, at reconvening something like that, um, to help us, uh, with rules governing and the use of, and, uh, future expansion, uh, of the cemetery. Um, increase in that was the purchase of, uh, two new mowers for next year, replacement of the two existing mowers, to those sixteen thousand, I believe.
Any thoughts on the house? What can we do with it?
No, we've had internal discussions, but.
That would be one of the, really one of the charges of a consultant who specializes in cemetery operations and the future of cemeteries in terms of, um, is what, is that house having value for us, um, in terms of either just rent it out, which we've done in the past, or does it get converted to be used for, um, during a funeral, perhaps after the funeral that can be used, um, as a, as a gathering place? If that doesn't make any sense, then it's just there as a house where you, you just, you fix it up and you rent it out and you just, you just get some income from it, but.
If you haven't been in it, it's, it's.
It's really needs work.
It'd take a hundred thousand dollars to up retake.
Or you take it down and, um, it has no, maybe it has no value to us. It's just one more asset that we don't need to deal with, but that would be one of the things I think the board could help us with is establish, do you, does it make sense to, to keep it or to, to take it down?
Thank you. Any other questions on the cemetery?
Looks great. I know I get calls daily on it and saying that it's really an improvement since the city's taken it over and kudos to your staff.
Thank you. I think if we just added a seventy acre park, a very specialized seventy acre park, we could really, we, obviously we have some additional staffing for it, but that's just, that just got thrust upon us and, uh, if you drive through there, it's, we've done a really, really good job with it. But again, that gets back to that director, administrator level position that we're talking about is, could help us with, with the planning for the, for its future, so.
Just, just to make you aware, because it'll be another one of those things looming down, uh, next year or two, um, from a cash flow standpoint, separating out the, the perpetual funds or whatever else, um, you know, it does look nice, but there's a price tag for that from, from an annual, even if we take out the $16,000 with the mowers and say we're not gonna get those every year. Uh, we're about eighty-some thousand dollars expenditures over revenues. Um, we had a little bit of a carryover fund balance, uh, from when we transitioned, but, uh, that transfer right now coming from the general fund's about 40,000. You know, uh, cemeteries aren't one of those profit centers that you're kind of really, it's, it's obviously one of the reasons why. And again, there becomes some, uh, value discussions that it counts, future councils will have to have about that level of maintenance and, you know, how much we, you know, need to subsidize. It's not one of those things we can just raise the price for burials because then you'll get even fewer of them sometimes. And, uh, it's just the, the reality of it.
How much money's up to the perpetual fund?
Um, I've got, and then that, that hundred fifty thousand dollars in 2016 isn't specific to a given thing. There's probably about, about 200,000. Uh, one of the things we acquired was the software here to, to make sure we can stay on top of everything there. So that's getting implemented now.
That was a quarter of a million, when we got it, right? Two hundred fifty thousand?
Roughly about two hundred fifty. If you look at, you know, the budget for 2015 was actually 250,000. I just put it in there as a placeholder so they know what that amount is. And, and so, you know, depending on how much the software costs, it might be around $200,000.
And we've been selling plots as far as, are they coming in back to...
Well, I did, it picked up a little bit, and I've shared some, some thoughts with Tom, you know, really what that cemetery needs, not to hire another consultant, but there are people that we need to look at how we lay out that cemetery moving forward. Uh, I didn't realize until six, seven, eight months ago, and Carolyn said that we really don't have new burial, you know, burial spaces without going out and just, you know, cutting in some more pathways. But with where things are headed in the cemetery business, you know, there's more, people are more into columbariums and, and, and walking path type of things where you don't need as much space, but you need to have a different look to it and how it's laid out. And that's where I think somebody that's got a lot more experience than any of us do and, and how and what's, you know, what's out there in the cemetery business is come in and make a suggestion. As you start expanding and then opening up, here are the things that people are gonna wanna, wanna do. And hopefully that works to our advantage, because obviously it doesn't take as much to, you know, I, they have these vaults or whatever they call the columbariums, where you can, you can put 200, 300, 400 people into this granite wall. You know, the maintenance that, on that, moving forward is a fraction of what it is to have to take care of a more traditional burial site. So we need to start getting that into our, our inventory, so to speak, of options. Plus, that's what people want. And, 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 and for us to just go out there and put another pathway out there and, we need a little bit more than that. Um, and looking at some of those things, too, that, that, that may need to be, to done, uh, out there to, to keep it, keep it viable.
I know cremations are up too, versus burial. And that really cut into the operation out there.
Stacy, is there a, um, a plot directory that is valid?
Mm-hmm.
Usable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that, and that's not online?
There is one online.
Well, there's a, there's a database out there that's maintained by a private citizen. And that's part of what we wanted to do initially when we took that over. We've gotta get that information in City's Control. And our, when we have our, and they're gonna, we're gonna probably sign the contracts, uh, next week. But, uh, um, you'll be able to even do more online as far as searching and locating. It'll be, uh, map-based, so you can even locate based online. So if somebody really wanted to, if they had, you know, their, their cellphone, they could go out there, not just search and find somebody that's buried there, but get pretty close to where it's at. Uh, and then that'll be coming probably April, May, April next year should be fully operational.
Excellent.
Were you out there Saturday for the Wees Across America? I just wondered if it was well-attended or not.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Okay. Any thoughts on the cemetery? Any questions to Stacy?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you wanna say a few words about the directorship?
If you don't mind. Yep. Um, just, you know, reiterating, uh, what I, what I discussed before, um, council a, a few months back is, you know, just the, the, the need for that, um, for that position. You know, it's been since 2009 that we have not had that position. Um, and, you know, with, with our, with our change from, you know, the traditional parks and recreation to now the, um, Parks and Natural Resources Department and with sustainability and those types of things, um, you know, I think it would head us in the right direction to, to fill that position. Um, you know, I think it's critical, uh, for, for us, uh, you know, to be sure that the quality of life in Delaware doesn't suffer from, uh, you know, with the sustaini, sustainability and, and natural resources and things. Um, you know, we have a, a huge bike way master plan that's in the works now. Uh, we still need, you know, we'll be working on that in 2016, trying to, to get that finished up. And, um, you know, it's just, uh, be a little selfish here, but my plate's a little full. Uh, so, um, you know, just, uh, I don't, I won't, I don't wanna keep rehashing the things that I talked to you before about, but those are just some of the, the points that I wanted to make sure I made to you tonight. So.
How does it help you, Stacy, do you think? What are the principal areas of help?
It, it'll let me focus back on what, you know, the day-to-day operations and, and those types of things, um, instead of, you know, like I said, about everything right now. I mean, you know, and, and let me focus back on what I'm really supposed to be focusing on. So, is the big one.
May I ask a question, Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
Remind me how many employees we're adding to the parks? Are we adding?
We're adding hours. We're adding hours, yes. Um, 1,000 hours.
Thousand hours.
I think we're adding, and I don't know what that equates to in terms of seasonals, uh, but yes. That's principally to deal with.
Yeah, primarily be a body.
One person.
For summer.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
You're doing a great job, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, we can take a break for five minutes. Come back at you briefly. Take forty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's um eight forty-seven, call this meeting back to order, eight forty-five by my watch.
I need two.
Do you have, is there two?
Yeah, there's a whole set.
Can you send them this way?
Okay.
That's what he's saying.
Oh, you got it. Okay, we got it.
Darren, you.
One more. Kent's passing out here. I think it's good.
Back around the horn.
That's it. Thank you. This is down to Jackie.
Okay. Now we're on other funds. We'll call this other funds.
Other funds. We usually don't spend a whole lot of time talking about these. Tom wanted to set aside some time and go through some of the more, well not so much just very specific or important other funds, but some that have some issues maybe you might want to talk about. So I'm gonna make a couple of comments and flip through it. I did handout copies. They're just exact copies of the miscellaneous fund. It's no different than what's in the budget and just make it easier to walk, you know, as I walk through some of these. And when we're done, we can talk about other, some of the other funds too, if you'd like to. But just before I get started, I wanted to just, you know, sometimes we look at our budget and, you know, you read the paper that, you know, it's a nineteen million dollar budget and all that sort of stuff. But actually, it's much, much, much greater than that. That's just our general fund. And we have a lot of funds that are other than a lot of communities more traditionally in a general fund, our Fire EMS fund, our municipal court fund. But I went through and looked at it from a revenue source because sometimes this can get a little bit complicated, but we have transfers from the general fund to the cemetery fund to this fund and whatever else. But of our ninety-nine, almost a hundred million dollars of revenue that are projected for two thousand sixteen, sixteen million dollars of it is borrowed funds, mostly notes for Glen Road that were reissuing, so it shows up as a revenue each year. And then we have twenty-one and a half million dollars of transfers. So the net money collected just from fees and taxes and grants and everything else is seventy, seventy-eight million, three hundred forty-five thousand. Our total appropriation is a hundred and nine million, and again, that includes some transfers and things that are counted twice. But going through the miscellaneous funds, the first one there that I gave you is that community promotion fund. And again, Tom just identified it as one that had some input from council at various times. And the only comment I have related to that was that I think there was, and then Tom can further explain, capital outlay amount, thirteen thousand dollars related to the Rutherford B. Hayes memorial, doing something related to that. And we had a committee of council, I believe, that had made some suggestions with how to allocate those community promotion fund, which is basically our hotel motel tax. And one of the things I did do is I added specific lines that you could actually see in two thousand sixteen what the funds are earmarked for. And so that's pretty much what that fund is. Like I said, feel free if you have any questions.
I know there were some questions about, so what this represents are the recommendations from the council committee that reviewed the applications with Jackie and other staff members a couple of months ago. And what you see in here are based upon those recommendations. So if you accepted the budget tonight, putting aside this capital outlay amount that Dean had spoken about, this would be really concurring with the recommendation of that council committee to allocate those dollars across those different entities. And I do know that there was discussion regarding Main Street and some of the performance measures, performance expectations that the city had established with Main Street earlier in the year. And I know what we passed out just a couple of minutes ago is based with some thoughts that Vice Mayor Schaefer had on adding to the list of expectations that council has for the organization. I know there was some interest in discussing that. So that's before you as well, something to discuss. The capital outlay that Dean referred to was just a placeholder for what I think needs to be some dollars that get allocated ultimately to. We talked about doing something on the corner in connection with Sky Climbers' interest in, they had talked about a project that we talked to them briefly about. You'll recall perhaps a fountain on the corner where the little civic plaza is. And that has added to that is just a conversation that I know has been had informally about should we recognize President Hayes more, in a more serious, not serious, but in a, in a, in a way that's enhanced over how we're currently recognizing him. And I know that there have been a lot of conversations about this. I think we need as a city to make a, to take the lead, to help take the lead in that effort. Gene Buckingham is a former city councilman, has contacted us, I know he's spoken to Carolyn recently, today I think, about his interest in doing this. I've talked to the principal at Hayes. Obviously, their Rutherford B. Hayes High School and where can you go in the city that has something significant about Rutherford B. Hayes that's in front of the BP gas station. And not that that memorial can't be improved, but I think the question is, could we do more as a community to recognize his importance as a president, his birthplace here, his contribution to Ohio Wesleyan as a trustee, and other accomplishments? So that won't come without the cost, but if you read recently, the little town of Edison raised thirty-five thousand dollars on its own for a statue of Edison that's actually going to be in the state Capitol, in the US Capitol.
Ohio.
Pardon?
Mylan, Ohio.
Mylan, Ohio, I'm sorry. Edison in Mylan, Ohio. And so I just think it's, we need to do something here. It's really, I think, about time.
Edison, Ohio is known for pool tables.
I meant Mylan. But that's where Edison's birthplace. And so it's just something that really is overdue.
We don't know how much it's gonna be.
No, we really don't. I know that we talked about at one point, I pitched the idea to council that you consider a fountain for that corner. I still think some sort of water feature would really be very, very, would help define that corner and define the downtown. And until you get a landscape architect or firm on board, you really don't know. But we are gonna have to spend some money to actually figure out what we're gonna do. I think the community could help get behind something, but we have to kind of have the plan. Would a statue go in front of, on our side and would it go in front of City Hall? Would it be more appropriate to put it there versus across the street? I think you probably get different opinions depending on who you ask, but.
That's such a gathering area. I think it makes sense to be there. The statue plus some type of a water.
Across the street? Yeah.
We have to talk to Scott Blackwell. There's a committee forming. Brett Carson's on it, Jack Osborne's on it, so.
But this, that was really just kind of a placeholder for some dollars that might have to be spent in connection with having somebody help us, you know, lay something out. The other part of that is working with Donna Meyer, who's with the Historical Society, in revamping the existing memorial area, at least making that more presentable. And that would require the permission of Mr. Michaelitis, who owns the property, but I think he would be agreeable if the city said we would, we would assume responsibility for that. But the existing memorial itself is old and needs to be refurbished. The landscaping is old and it really doesn't, just doesn't, it's not that dignified at all for what it's trying to memorialize. So really got two pieces now. Anyway, that's what that's, that covers.
Just update council and the committee, we, with Chris and I and Carolyn on, we evaluated all these on the point system, but we set that program up. And the applications had to be to on time and everything. And everything was pretty much intact and this is how we came out with it.
Any questions or comments on allocations?
It's the first time we've done it this year, this way.
Are we gonna talk about benchmarks for Main Street? That's. So my thought on this is, look, Main Street's a great opportunity for our downtown merchants. We do do town on the first Friday, but I think we've all at times talked about, we'd like to see membership growth, we'd like to see a lot more of the Main Street or downtown businesses evolve. We'd like to see, you know, a website that's up to date and has your current events on, and people can join Main Street via the website, they can donate via the website. These are just good basic business things that I think we'd like to see Main Street do. We've made a significant investment in for several years. I think at this point, it's okay for us to start asking for some specific results in terms of what we'd like to see in terms of growing Main Street. Yeah, I mentioned to Tom, I had a couple of business people from downtown, of course, who have started their own business organizations. I don't think that's what we want to see happen, but I think there's some frustration there. And so I think, you know, and these are some thoughts that Carolyn, Tom and I had a meeting, I don't know, a few months back or something, and kicked this around, and I just sent them my thoughts. So these are the things that I came up with. They may not be perfect and they may have to go to my thoughts to do, but I think at least this way we're setting some benchmarks in terms of membership, the website, and in terms of looking at what other cities are doing with their downtown business organizations and trying to emulate some of the successes here in town. I don't think that's our responsibility to go to the cities and find out what you're doing and come back. I think that's, that's become a mainstream thing, that, go to their own organization.
Well, didn't we send her thing back and tell her that that's why they were going to? We gave her some specifics.
And I don't know what the specifics were. I know Tom had sent a letter earlier here that they ever got a response to. Yeah.
So, and I think that had a number of.
Conditions.
Conditions and adding doors to that, Kent, I think is what you're suggesting, right?
Yeah, I don't remember now, it's been a while. I don't have that particular letter with me.
It was growing membership.
Jackie, do we have that?
Pretty much, yeah. Problem is just staying growing membership is, what does that mean? I think we need to set some benchmarks.
And then not giving them all the money until some of these.
Right. Yes, say, here's what we expect by June thirtieth and here's what we expect by year.
Yeah, just don't cut her a check for fifteen dollars.
I mean, what we could do is come back with a suggested letter with incorporating what you indicated in what was in previous letter, get council to review that and tell us. I mean, growing membership, we had put that in there before. I think it makes a lot of sense to increase that. We'd actually, I know Sean, who's our staff representative to that board, has talked about software to help them with that.
Come forward, Jeff.
People want to do that with our city website, you can have double website. You got, we have some ideas, right?
Absolutely.
But you're not to build it.
I don't want to build it. Thank you, council. Just a report on that, it was one of the items in our memorandum is that they specifically utilize some sort of membership database. To go along with that cra- that request that we made of them, they've actually utilized a piece of software that we actually are using to manage our economic development website called Wild Apricot. So I have trained Francis and the board president on the software. They've brought an intern on from Ohio Wesleyan, I believe, who is right now actually rebuilding the Main Street website and the new piece of software. I don't know a lot of details about what that will encompass. However, the software itself does give the organization a lot more capabilities to more effectively manage their membership. More regularly. Bill invoiced their membership every year for membership because they really didn't know when somebody joined, when they left. So now all of that is stored in the database, the membership database is part of the software. It issues those invoices by email. They can send them out by mail. They could take payment right there on the website. They can take donations for programs instead of, you know, for like the Christmas tree program and whatnot, they could have taken the donations right through the software online, kind of like, almost like a Kickstarter type tool. They can also manage their volunteers through the website. They can manage all their events and registrations for such on the website. It's just a very, very full-fledged organizational tool for them.
What is the membership percentage currently for Main Street?
It's digress.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's over eighty businesses just in historic portion of downtown. And that's not counting some that reside on upper floors that we haven't identified. Some of them sneak in up there and we don't know they're there. I'd say, I think last time Tom and I looked at this, we're about twenty, twenty-one, that were actually downtown, that were members and actual businesses, not.
Out of how many?
Eighty, eighty-plus.
There's a lot, they have good institutional, pretty good institutional base. They really have to grow the actual business owners, and I think that was what was included.
Yes.
That's the letter that is. I think even, I mean, the goal for training group of businesses is obviously to get them to join, but even if they don't, I just think that our downtown business organization needs to be visiting our downtown businesses on a regular basis. And I have numerous of them, but that doesn't happen.
If you take a look at the October twenty-ninth memo that the Community Promotions Committee sent, this is an explanation as to why different groups were awarded what they were awarded. Looking under Main Street, the committee was very insistent that with the committee recommendation of seventeen thousand five hundred, that the letter that would go back to this organization as well as the others that would be awarded these funds is that the award was based on, they had to demonstrate significant increase of downtown business membership, software for membership tracking and improving holiday tree decorations. And I don't see any reason if that's council's direction that we couldn't include some of the other things that Ken mentions, Kent mentions here. Further, that anyone that is awarded Community Promotions Fund, the committee had set up that they must come back and make a report to the committee before they're eligible for the next year's funds. So anyone who would fail to meet any criteria that we put there, would put that, that we would put in place, would put themselves in danger of not being funded again, or funded at a lower level. So at your direction, I'm happy to include, besides these three items that the committee had recommended, anything else that, you know, council would like to include as well.
When is that report supposed to take place?
The report has to be back into us before they can be considered again. So we send out the applications in June, and so in August, they have to have it back to us, by August first.
So as you recommended, to fund them in two checks this year?
We normally do it quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yeah. We pay them quarterly. And I think if they know ahead of time.
How do we pay everybody else?
I think it's, is there, I don't know if it's quarterly or is there billed.
That's asking. We pay quarterly or do we just write a check to the Arts Castle?
Actually, they invoice us quarterly.
Yeah, Arts Castle invoices quarterly. S C B C I, we've never.
We're gonna have to figure out what the second ward, this is a large amount of money, we'll want to probably meet with them.
We're trying.
And the reason the committee, we liked the way S C B C I did this and, is that they actually identified various programs that they were going to do and how much each one of those programs could do. So we can actually tie this five thousand dollars back to their educational programs, five thousand back to health and wellness. They identified what they would cost and when they would be doing it and how much they would cost. And then Central Iowa Symphony was a one-time, last year, it was just a one-time grant.
Does anybody have any objections to Kent's, what you got handed out tonight?
I think it's good.
Okay. I'll put together a memo, excuse me, a letter, and then we'll circle that to make sure everyone's comfortable with it, okay?
Are we gonna set a benchmark for the membership percentage?
We, let me go back to the letter that we, we gave them a goal, I think it was over a period of time, to increase membership by X percent. I may have been.
I wasn't really sure what that should be, but I think we need to test myself.
Okay.
That's already been given.
Yeah, we, let me, yeah, let me have an opportunity to write, put something together and then bring it back for your approval.
Jackie, I just want to make sure the actual visiting of businesses is part of that.
I circled that, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And some sort of report about, I visit the businesses.
Yes, I don't, you want me to? And this is not delegated, this is.
Yeah. Good at delegating.
I thought you meant me.
Yeah, I think our, our local goal here is we really want to see this be a vibrant organization. It is how we'd like it to be. We're trying to help get there.
Absolutely.
Oh, go ahead, Ken. I was just gonna say, is there anything else on?
We did, we have under special events, I think that was, that was some dollars that we might use for Iron Man. We're not sure yet. Is that what that was, Jackie? Special events. Yeah, we don't know. We won't spend anything until we actually come back to you and let you know what it's gonna be used for.
All right, the next page, one eighty-eight is the tree fund. We've already talked about that, I think. I don't think there's anything, at least I was going to add. Flip to the next page. It says one eighty-nine at the bottom. It's the airport tea hanger fund. Tom wanted me to just kind of explain real quick what this is. We, in, I think, two thousand, yeah, it says two thousand. We made a somewhat of an investment decision, so to speak, out at the airport, and we built three new two ha- tea hanger buildings that had multiple units in it. And at the time, we wanted to, you know, we were reasonably confident that it would pay for itself over time. And so we set up a separate fund to just track the hanger rent for those three new two hangars that we built in the year two thousand. And so far, I mean, we're fifteen years into it. First several years, we just reissued the debt. We borrowed about one point one, four, five million dollars and we reissued that as notes and just paid the interest so we could build up a little bit of a cushion balance. But it's playing out as we intended. We roughly need about a ninety-five, and we knew this upfront, about a ninety-five percent occupancy in the building and the units. And we do need to gradually increase rent for those hangars. I know that's come up. A couple of council members have mentioned that. If you just look strictly at a cash flow, you can look in two thousand six, we're bringing in eighty-five thousand, spending a hundred and three. And again, we are intentionally are drawing down that fund balance. That's why I financed it the way we did several years ago. But it does also, at some point, we're, you know, we've got about another ten, ten years or so that are less to kind of cover that difference. But ultimately, we have to get to that point where our revenues are a hundred and three thousand dollars a year. And so a series of at least inflationary increases over the next ten years need to occur. And again, we still need to be market competitive because we can't price ourselves out. There may be, I know there's been some discussions even just last year about some potential other investors at that airport. And, you know, it seems to be the same thing. People are interested. Somebody wanted to buy the existing Schotmer Building. And, you know, it, you know, at some point, and whether it's, it's something I think needs to be shared with the airport committee, but this is really more of a strategic discussion at the city's level to say, if we really want, we're gonna invest through the FAA another four and a half million dollars into extending that runway, we may need to look at a similar type of investment. Build something from the city's standpoint, you know, typically might say, let the private sector do it, but they really haven't stepped up in the fifteen years or so since we relocated that runway. And something like this can be a catalyst to actually start having that airport not just be a facility that some people use, but, you know, over the years, the city's interested was to really make it more of an economic development type of asset for the community. Not just a place where, you know, some of the people that had single-engine planes could keep their plane and recreational flyers. So this has worked out quite well. I think something like that could be contemplated more online instead of tea hangars for, we did this to get more base aircraft out there because that helped us get more FAA money so we can do some of those improvements. But looking at, perhaps considering, considering, the city may be investing in a more of a corporate hanger type of space and how we might be able to use the rents that we charge to advise business to function out there that then can become, hopefully, you know, even spillover into perhaps even have, you know, some sort of small jet service out there where some of our corporate entities in Delaware can go out there and have a fractional interest in a jet or, you know, charter some, some jet aircraft and do things like that. But this fund is solely to, to, to collect the money for rents and then pay the cost of the, we do pay a real estate tax on that because it is a, almost like a profit-like type of entity, but, and to cover our debt service. And then jump in if you have any questions. The next one is page 192, and this is another airport-related fund, several years ago when we made those, made some improvements out there, built the Schotmer Hangar, and had the outfit out of Akron built, airspace place built some more hangars. We put a TIF in place, we worked with the schools, we actually were able to explain to them that this is truly one of those things, and hopefully can have a spillover effect, not so much at the airport, but, but elsewhere. And initially, we made an improvement to a ramp, we used general fund money, we did it in advance, as this TIF money came in, we paid back the general fund, but we're at the point now, moving forward, where we're getting about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars a year, something that gets talked about a little bit, it's capital improvement time, but we really didn't focus a whole lot on it. But that's what this, this fund tracks, we have to have a separate fund, and then we can use there. There are some limitations on what we can use it for out at the airport, based on the TIF legislation, but that's what that fund represents. The next one on page 2008 is the Revolving Loan Fund, and I'm not going to get into a whole lot of detail, other than that there were some changes, I think Tom wanted to have this one put out there and have some discussion if there's any to be had, just on the changes that were made and what we had originally thought, especially as it pertains to perhaps some, some wayfinding enhancements and, and what actually occurred. So it's pretty much there, if there's, there's questions.
Yeah, I really, I just draw your attention to the facade loan program is programmed next year at seventy-five thousand. Chris had asked the question about expanding the boundaries for that across the river and over to the east side, and I think that's where, I think we're going to have the flexibility to do that, and it's just a matter of probably some approvals that we have to go through here. I don't know if Lance, you can speak to that.
Yeah, I was updated on this, there are approvals that would have to occur in the state, but ultimately we have to approve that. And there's a process that we went through back in 2011 to do that. And depending on those variables and the outcomes, that'll determine what we fee more on.
We'd have to make the application because it's ultimately state dollars, and we would, we would make the case that there's as much, as much reason to do these across another area, it's really another part of our business district as there is here.
And it's a gateway.
Absolutely, and I think you can make a pretty compelling case that we've done a pretty good job of leveraging those dollars in our downtown, in the historic district, let's try to do that across the river, on the river and, on Lake Street and Winter. So that was one, one thing I wanted to mention. Unfortunately, the second part of the wayfinding is going to be, we have to defer that until we start generating some new income with what we're loaning out, because we made that loan, the council approved, to the, to Skyclimber, and so that's got to be, that loan has to be processed, and obviously, we'll be getting income back from that, but that took some of the dollars away from what we'd otherwise be using for the wayfinding program, so.
The, the, the grant that's here, the fund, obviously, in the name, it's Revolving Loan Fund, was originally intended to be an economic development tool to provide money borrowed to businesses. Over time, those balances have built up, and the state says you've got to get them down, and they did allow us to do some other miscellaneous projects, and so we had done some of those, but the original, the purpose of the, the program is to revolve loans to businesses. And as Tom said, we did have a rather large one, so there's not as much to use on other things. Just one other comment on that, especially on the facade loan program, that's probably not a good title, there's no loan to it, there's nobody paying any of that back, it's more of a, you leverage money, this, you know, through this program might cover twenty percent or twenty-five percent of the cost, so they don't have to pay that back, so it's not really a loan.
Isn't the fifty percent match?
Yeah, I don't know what it is, but it's fifty percent. It's actually a grant, so it's not a loan.
The other thing, just to draw to your attention, Lisa, you'd asked about this when we were talking about general operation budgets, the blighted property demolitions, so we have allocated dollars in here for demolitions for additional properties, but again, that's, you know, it takes a long time to get that done. We have, had some conversations with Habitat for Humanity and trying to leverage some of their resources as well, so.
Now, will those blighted property demolition funds also be used for the property that properties we're looking to buy from?
They could, but there's probably more strings attached to that, so we might not be able to use them for that, so when we did.
I think that's what he said.
Whether we can use the, these dollars for the Lee K Bennett, those Bennett properties, we included in the appropriation enough dollars to acquire those, acquire and demolish with our dollars.
Okay.
We'll try, but quite frankly, Dave has indicated it's probably not going to be possible to do that, just too many strings attached to it, so.
There's a long list to be.
Yeah, there's some properties that we've, I know Lisa's had some constituents bring some, some of those issues to her attention that we're trying to work on as well.
Don't we have time in between now and June to file again for more money, it's revolving money from the state?
Only if we apply, if we had a business that came in and wanted to borrow money, yes. If we were at zero, and we had another Liberty Casting situation where you had a business, we could go to the state, that's how all this got started, was Liberty Casting several years ago, requested dollars to borrow, they borrowed the money, they paid it back, and we weren't able to rub all of it out as quickly as it was coming in, so then we came up with these other programs, but yes, we could.
That's what I thought we were going to do in 2016. Well, we had that gal on the phone when we did the discussion on Skyclimber.
About the committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, those loan dollars are on an as-needed and competitive basis, so if we had a project, as Tom suggested, come in in 2016, we would then have to submit that project to the state in a competitive nature, and they would determine whether that was a project that would be funded out of their pot of dollars, not ours.
Because I know she had said something, the pot's pretty cool right now.
Yeah, I mean, evidently, that particular fund hasn't been tapped into a whole lot in the last couple of years, because banks have been very competitive with their interest rates and whatnot lately. So if we did have a good project to bring forward, it was a competitive project, we would stand a good chance, but it doesn't increase our fund really, money's going to come directly from, from the state now. And I'll have to find out, if the payments are made back, do we take the payments, do we keep the interest? I do not know the answer to that question.
Yeah, generally, that was, but you had to pretty much have a project that was willing to borrow, and then we had some that talked about it, but my understanding, we listened to that conversation, that would, then our, then our, our pool of money available would grow, and we revolve that when they pay, because that's how we expanded over years, there's been a number of different improvements, our loans that have been made where we went back and got more money, but, you know, there's just not a whole lot of people necessarily interested in the loan side of it, so it's sometimes.
But our friend who just borrowed the five hundred thousand dollars, that'll all come back to us.
Right.
Yeah, right. With interest, and that, yeah, and that's where we potentially start building up the millions, yeah. So that's all we wanted to cover there, it's just really, we had park impact fees in there. George had raised a question, I think, a while back about when was the last time we looked at increasing these? They don't work like, like a lot of fees where you would just increase them with cost of living, these are tied to a study that's done to take a look at what your capital assets are, how much you've invested in those, what your, what your replacement is, what your, what your plan is for replacing equipment in parks and that type of thing. So I did, I think I shared with council a couple of reports ago, my last report, what an update would cost, how an update would be undertaken, and an update could be paid for, if we did it, it's, it could be paid for with park impact fee funds, but this really, we don't, we're not showing that now, it'd really be another discussion council would have to have around the question of the impact fees, and probably talk about that, about that study separately. We are reflecting, Chris, I know you had requested that we look at expanding that trail on the west side, Trotters Landing, that's in there, just because it was, it's become a more complicated project with utilities and whatnot, but it's still, it's still shown in there as a, as a project for.
Four hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Yeah, it's just, these trail projects are, they're expensive, I mean, especially given the complexity of that, that particular project, so, anyway. And we have in there Ross Street in there, if we someday, someday, when we relocate parks and parks, parks over to East William Street, we're looking at using some dollars to reestablish a park at Ross Street, so that's really, that's kind of, again, that's a placeholder.
And as I mentioned earlier with the tree discussion, again, these are park impact fees, so we have to use this money to expand our capacity, and, and, and how does that apply to Ross Street? Well, again, right now, we have buildings that are being used for a maintenance effort, and that hundred thousand dollars, part of which we did tear down the buildings, that we'll no longer keep, and we'll expand the parkland, right now, there's, I don't know, three acres of parkland, when we take down those buildings, there might be four, four and a half, and so it is making that park bigger, and.
Thanks for that, Kevin.
The other thing, from a cash flow standpoint, we've been taking in, you can see the park impact fees that have been paid over 2013, 2014, we do have debt down there at the bottom, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, that debt is paid off in 2016, so moving forward, now, obviously, that's some, some of the things we talked about with our five-year capital plan, but there's, there's, we'll, we'll have all the debt paid off, so, you know, as we look at projects moving forward, that won't be there.
Tom, would any of these park impact fees be used for walkway, bikeway, whatever you want to call it there, West of Wheelers, down there near Smurk Village, where we don't have any, where we don't have any ability for pedestrian and.
If it was, if it was a trail as opposed to just the sidewalk, yes.
Yeah, because both those areas, again.
I know, I know, I know, just getting it to Lexington would be a big improvement.
Yeah, yeah, and then the west there of, of 303 would be, there's, there's another place, where the garden rails are right up against the side of the road.
Getting really out to Locust Curve and Lander Chase ultimately is what you want to complete it.
The fifty-five thousand in there for Veterans Plaza was based on how that kind of played out, I think there's some, some hope or some thought that there might be some more donated funds coming in, so there's also a revenue of fifty-five thousand at the top, so that materializes, it does, if it doesn't, then I don't think anything will happen. Next page is municipal impact fee improvements, and I think was just the discussion point, the only project, there's debt service that we're still paying back for acquiring and making improvements in public work, and for a portion, the police portion of the Justice Center, half of it anyways, and so that debt service that you see each year will continue through 2032 is when that'll be paid off, but there is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars tied to that expansion of the Public Works facility down there, whether that occurs or however.
That's really a separate discussion with council we've had before, so we've got to revisit that, revisit that shortly.
And the next funds that Tom will talk a little bit about, one's our self-insurance health fund, and then the, the last one there is our workers' comp, which we sell, pretty much self-fund, we do pay a small premium in, it's called retrospect with our workers' comp. And we had had at that previous meeting, quite a bit of discussion about our self-insurance fund, and as I indicated then, it's, we're in pretty good shape, you know, the fund balance changed, it was more a function of drawing down those, that balance, 2005 is probably going to be one of our higher years as far as claims paid, but again, what's that, 2015?
I said 2005, true.
I'm ten years behind. But anyways, it's, we've been quite successful with our self-funded plan, this is, you know, we transfer the amounts coming in from the various departments as part of their budgets, and that's what's referred to, it's called premiums, but we don't technically pay that out, premiums, it's, you know, the police department's share might be eight hundred thousand dollars that's coming in, or whatever it is, and you can see that the numbers really haven't changed, that's what I mentioned at a previous meeting, we've, we've been really able to actually keep down our, the budget impact of health insurance costs. In fact, where it's at in 2016, at fifteen thousand five hundred a year for family coverage, we were at that level in 2012 at fifteen five, so if there's other questions or anything related to that, I'd try to answer those. The workers' comp, again, we're kind of in a similar situation, we've done quite well, we, we pay actually our workers' comp claims when they come in for a, for a ten-year period, and so we're kind of on the hook after that ten-year period, then we're, we're off the hook, and then it can fluctuate up and down a bit, but when you look at it in total, a good example is 2015, the, the, under the 2015 estimate column, we've got eight thousand dollars we pay, somebody does assist us with our workers' comp claims and, and, and working with those at the state level, but it says B W C premiums, we do pay because it's the bureau, they, they get a certain amount, even if we don't have any claims, and that's the 187, but our actual claims, seventy-two, eight oh, eight oh one, that represents a ten-year period, basically from 2014 back to 2005, of actual claims that are employed, some of them, most of them no longer work here because, you know, they stay, stay with it after that, but yeah, that up, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, I mean, there was years where we were almost paying eight, eight hundred thousand dollars in workers' comp cost, and so we've done quite well, and I haven't really changed at all that allocation in our budget for workers' compensation, and our fund balances is more than adequate. One of the things to talk to Tom a little bit about, I think Bill had mentioned it in one of his budget meetings about some potential, he had talked about putting money in for some safety equipment, it's something we really haven't done a whole lot of recently, but we certainly could utilize those, that fund balance there to look at, stepping up our efforts with it, whether it be equipment or some other things that are safety-related, and, and look at doing something that.
Yeah, we have a recommendation from Bill that I just got today in terms of some additional expenditures for safety-related things, whether we can include it in, get it in yet this budget, or just come to you at the beginning of the year with a supplemental, but I do want to let you know that there are things that we can do to reduce workplace safety, and we can use some of these funds.
Increase workplace safety.
Hopefully, this is a logic. I mean, increase, reduce workplace accidents, I'm sorry, reduce work, yes, for the people at home, reduce workplace injuries.
Well, I would hope, for the people working on 23 and Sandusky, as well as 315 and Sandusky, if it's our people, I would say we need to spend the money today.
Yeah.
To keep them safe this year and not wait.
Well, if we can.
Those are huge intersections.
We can then get these, get these adjustments back to you before the 21st, we will, I just got it today from Bill, so, yeah, we'll try to get it in here. But really, it's, it's a, it's a valid use of these dollars.
Right.
Because it's going to, you know, hopefully reduce the risk associated with injuries. So that was really just a overview, and the, turn it back to you in terms of what you'd like to do.
They're all looking at me, they're hungry, they want to go home. Well, does anybody have any other?
Let's order some food.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions or concerns on this, the budget here?
Well, just regarding the Parks Director, I'll be brief, but we heard this evening that our golf course is probably within two to three years of having no fund balance at all left. We heard that our cemetery, our fund balance in 2013 was three hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-seven, and this year, it's forty-four thousand. And so when we're talking about a need, we have these two areas where we're in a pretty tight situation in terms of what the future looks like for fund balances, and at some point, we will need to decide if we're going to use general fund money, or are we looking at closing the golf course? We can't close the cemetery, so I've heard people say that we don't really have a need for a Parks Director, but in my opinion, spending money and investing it with someone that can improve our situations just with those two fund balances alone would pay for the position, if that person was able to concentrate their efforts and make the golf course more profitable, and hopefully cut some of the losses at the cemetery.
Because I, my position's never been, there's no need to have someone do those things that I think are clear, because my, my feeling is that I'm not convinced that's a full pie, that it's a need. It may be now, and certainly will be in the future. I would just feel more comfortable if we have some other responsibilities, I want to make sure if we're going to put somebody at that level paying that kind of salary, we're getting a hundred percent out of that, and certainly.
Certainly, if we come back a year, two years from now and go, well, you know, we have doing planning or whatever else it is in this, and now we discover, they can't do that, that's, I'm okay, but I'm just a lot more comfortable saying, here's a couple of other things we're going to ask this person to do.
I'm comfortable with that.
While they oversee the park. I think we can, I think we'd all feel a little more comfortable that we're giving our monies worth out of that position.
So can we kind of take an informal straw poll of who's okay with adding some other responsibilities to that position, some duties that would be assigned to Tom, he could get us a job description, and we could, you know, give it a thumbs up or thumbs down at that point? Anybody not?
Well, can we agree that it should be planning? I mean, because that's kind of where I think it needs to be.
I think that's an important area. I think it's an area where we could use more help.
I think they can tie together.
Exactly, I think, because we're asking, a lot of what we're asking the Parks Director to do is long-term planning, strategic type stuff, and so. And the other thing I think is, and I know Joe feels this should be maybe a supervisory level position, but I think to get somebody that has the kind of skills that we want to both run the parks and be effective in planning, that's not an entry-level position, I don't think. I think we have to have somebody that has some experience, so, I don't know if the listed salaries are right, but I'm certain no one would play with that, but if we can get somebody that's doing the parks and planning, and we have to all play with reasonable salary to get a call by person, then I'm okay with that. Because I'm just looking for some area that we can all kind of get our hands on, you know.
Sounds like a decent compromise. Anybody not okay with that?
So are you saying, take a look at the existing position description that we put together, and take a look at how, how much emphasis is on planning, if it's not there, make sure that that's, that's a big part of it, add it?
Yes, yeah, I guess that's.
Are we saying 25%? I mean, goes to planning and 75 goes to parks, or, I mean, do we want to?
I wouldn't try to, I don't know if I'd try to quantify it or not, I think it would be.
I think what we have to do in addition to what we expect them to do in parks, we have to be specific about what the planning functions are, and those, by being specific about the functions, that'll kind of define the percentage. So if Tom comes back, doesn't go, here's the planning functions, I see this person doing it.
I mean, I do know that in my conversations with various professionals over the last, since last week, when we had a discussion, is if you had somebody who had a landscape architecture background, that's preferred because that person understands design, understands construction, understands planning, and if you take a look, just take a look at the website that, Ohio State's website on landscape architecture and Michigan State, it's very impressive in terms of that background to be able to do that. The stuff we're talking about tonight, whether it's a memorial or something like that, those are the kinds of things that somebody could help with.
There'll be an ideal background to do it.
That has that experience, whether you're able to get that, I'm not sure, but, so.
Okay, and I think this person should report to Jackie rather than you, since you've been dealing with parks for so long. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
I think it's Tom's call.
I think there's, as I told, mentioned last week, I think adding the direct report to me, I think is important initially. I think there's enough interaction with Jackie and I as a team that invariably there's things that are going to happen that I'm going to have to turn her for. But when the Park Director comes in and says, what's the vision for the future of our river, and how we're going to connect with Metro Parks and things like that, I think those are some of those decisions that I'd like to be involved in, quite frankly. And I think Jackie, Jackie's role is to help me with that, and help me with all of the direct reports that I have in terms of the things that inevitably come out of meetings that we have, so, but.
I keep going back to the NOVAC report that kind of, I feel like we're moving in the opposite direction in terms of adding direct reports, and I think it does make sense to transfer some of that.
Yeah, I'd like to see how it plays out initially. What I don't want to get into is a direct report to Jackie, and then she's coming to me with what the direct report is asking her. I mean, invariably, that's how, and then you, then you get, then you find yourself having to realign things. I, right now, I'd prefer just to get you the, you have this updated job description in terms of the reporting.
So how do we feel now about this position? George and Joe and Kyle, you're not saying much.
I voice my, my opinion, I don't think it needs to be a director's position, and I'll, I'd stay firm on it.
Okay.
Okay with the current consensus of the higher position.
Yeah, I don't think it's a director's level position. I just, I think that there's, what I want to see though is exactly what these responsibilities are, because again, I, I believe there is, whatever that percentage function is, I don't think it's that great, when we're talking about the strategic planning and what have you, out of 2,080 hours in a year, I just, I don't see that as encompassing and covering much of that time. I, probably less than 30%. So then I want to know what they're doing for that other 70%. And again, I go back to, I think we need more incomes and less achieves, so I would not support a cheap position, correct?
And it would require a motion to remove it from the budget, wouldn't it?
Well, I thought we were going to wait and see what Tom has to say, and then vote.
But to answer your question, if you were going to take it out, it's in the budget, the budget is a piece of legislation, so someone would have to move to, you can take it out, or you can move to, I don't know, reduce the funding if you wanted to make it less, and then, I mean, I could help whoever wanted to do that with the mechanics of doing that, but eventually, if you're going to, if you don't do anything, it's in there the way it was proposed.
Well, process-wise, I know you're focused on that issue, but I think any of the budget changes that you're proposing to make, there's been maybe a couple of them that maybe we've talked about, but whatever you decide with that, that needs to come back, because what I would traditionally do is before the next meeting, so well in advance of that, you know what budgets are coming from city council, and then you vote on the budget then as a whole when you adopt the ordinance, but I'll quantify what the effect of those changes are, whether it's something, as Darren said, reducing the amount allocated for the position, removing the position, or whatever else it is.
It would be, it would be kind of awkward if we did it the day we were trying to pass it, because Dean's got to, you want to pass a clean budget if possible.
Right, and that's why, before we get into that, it's one of the things I'm going to say before we adjourn here, we need to have, I need to have some clarity about how you want this budget ordinance amended, because what you've gone to a second reading on is the original budget, and then I go in and I actually amend that original budget, and I'll show that, and so this, along with any other budget, we just need to kind of put a list together, so we can get that back to you.
I guess for the sake of clarity, my position would be that we leave the position in, but that we add additional duties and planning to that position.
Devin Kent on that.
I am too. I'm okay. Okay.
Not as a director, I'm not. I don't think we need a director.
So when you're doing a motion, do we instead of sort of?
Well, we're not taking it out, we're doing a motion right here.
Yeah. Well, no, are we taking it out, are you here to, I don't know exactly who.
Four of us want to keep it in.
Well, it doesn't, it should probably be official on the record or something, shouldn't it?
That's fine.
Did you make a motion? Or is it not?
I mean, if nobody does anything, it's just the way it is, and you're fine, so I guess I would hint along that the folks who want it out, it's kind of on you to make a motion, if you want it in, just move on.
Well, one of the things related to that, and again, get back, is that over the years, several years ago, there'd be a lot of changes, we had a couple that would want to, and I, we weren't sure if we do or we don't, so having some sort of motion like this to say, you know, keeping it in or not, and at least based on that vote, the consensus is to take it out, or to leave it in, or whatever it is, and any other changes, because again, some of them weren't quite so difference of opinions, but we weren't sure, so do we, you know, somebody mentioned this at the meeting, do we add that or not, and it helps to have council as a body saying yes or no.
Then we leave the position in, but required that Tom add additional duties and planning.
Second. So in first, Mrs. Schaefer, or second, Mrs. Keller? Any further discussion, recovers? Go call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
No.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. So the position stays in with some additional ordering, you have to help out the planning.
And that won't represent a budget change, so you won't see anything from me because it's left in.
Right. You did also indicate we're interested in that permanent part-time building maintenance position going to full-time, and that's, the cost of that would be probably about $43,000, $43,455 to make that full-time. And so there are, we can review with you if you'd like, is there the consensus to do that? Because if there is, we can review with you how we would accomplish that. And I don't know, there was discussion about this in the last meeting, but Bill is here, and obviously, that's, that's adding to the budget, but there are some other areas where we could, we could reduce back.
So you want clarification, whether we want that to be a transition?
I was supposed to come back and tell us what, how it impacted.
Yeah, we got that, I can show you that, if you're interested in taking a look at that. Okay.
If you, if you want, I can kind of walk through, because there were going to be a couple of changes beyond what council might have suggested, I think we needed to make that will result in changing the budget ordinance, and some of those are reducing, which ultimately would perhaps come back into that funding issue. The original budget as it was submitted, because I didn't know, I don't know any of it in a year, for the non-unionized employees, included a 2.5% wage increase, I think that's been decided, it's going to be 2%, so that I have to adjust pretty much everybody's budget, some by a small amount, but the net effect of that for the general fund is reducing the budget by $22,507. So that'll be a change unless you want to change it back, that I'll, I'll be making. So each one of the appropriations that has a non-unionized employee will change slightly. We had, there was some discussion about position eliminated, what level, and that will follow up, but that'll be part of an adjustment that'll have to be made, if it's changed from what's originally included into the budget. There was a $10,000 amount that actually was in the police department budget that we thought at one point was taken out, but it's still in there in the appropriation related to mutual aid, council of governments, and it's an operating supply, so that's going to be taken out, that'll be a change, that'll be a reduction of $10,000. Then one of the other areas, which we talked a little bit about earlier, was in Bill's budget, street maintenance, there's $12,000 for a safety equipment that I'm comfortable, we can move that to the workers' comp fund. Now, it's a street maintenance fund, but we subsidize a street maintenance fund out of the general fund, so we reduce the general fund transfer by $12,000, and that would be a change.
So what's the net effect of?
There were, the only other change, there was a couple salary adjustments for some department head personnel, I think Tom spoke to council about presented at the last meeting, that adds 15,769, and so with all those changes, including the $43,455 additional for the full-time, part-time to full-time position building maintenance, the net effect on the general fund is $1,0728 to the positive. So all those things combined, it's not changing.
What we would do is we would reflect that in the budget ordinance that you're going to get a week from tonight, that would be in there. So we'd show that position going to full-time, and those, these, these are the changes we get to.
So I make a motion, we move that building maintenance position from part-time to full-time.
Second.
A motion from Mrs. Keller, stuck from Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Go call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay.
Any other action?
Yeah, I have a couple other changes that you might see, so let's, I inadvertently left this JED fund, because it never showed up in the past by losing, you used last year's fund, so I have to actually appropriate money, that JED tax that we're collecting, it comes into the city, and I have to distribute it to the city of Delaware, Berkshire Township. I didn't include that in the appropriation ordinance, it's money in, money out, it doesn't affect anything else we do, but I'll make that change, it's, I think I'm projecting maybe $25,000 or something, that'll be a change, that'll be made to the budget ordinance. The others, and I'll get a little bit better feel, because tomorrow, you know, I'm going to start working on year-end work, and our purchase order requests are supposed to be in from the departments. That may impact that year-end supplemental, that'll be on the agenda for the 21st, but invariably, we get some things towards the tail end of the year that were appropriated in 2015. It wasn't part of the original budget that went to city council, you know, a month or so ago, and we need to reappropriate, so there may be, I don't know, so that there will, but there may be some other changes to the 2016 budget ordinance. If it is, it's merely because we thought it was going to get done in 2015 and didn't, and it's just reappropriating the same funds. So those are, those would be the potential changes.
Okay, anything else?
We're going to finish our.
Yep, we're going to go back into executive session.
Just stay here.
We're going to stay here. Have a good evening, all. Does council need a five-minute break, or you guys good?
Let's just, let's just deal with them. I'm going to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Advice Code 121.22GE.
Three.
Three for first round.
No, it's second.
Go call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Executive session.
One moment. I don't, you have to leave.